Okay, call order, six o'clock, March 3rd, 2025. First order of business, 1.2 is the Pledge of Allegiance. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Kelly Ramirez, and then please remain standing for the invocation.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. We always look at this as a privilege, as pastors and leaders in our community that do the invocation, we look at it as a great privilege. So, thank you for having us tonight. I'm reading from the Hebrew scriptures. It's one of the proverbs that I need to read every now and then to remind me of something, and I'm going to let the proverb speak for itself. It won't be long, and then I will pray for you. My child, don't lose sight of common sense and discernment. Hang on to them. Amen. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you that we can be servants to this community and the community at large, and that our desire is to see the community improve, the community enlarge in spirit and in issues that take place, and from the borders of our community to the very inner circle of our community, Lord. We pray that you will give us common sense, discernment, keep our city safe, watch over our first responders, God bring them safely home at the end of the day, and we thank you again for the privilege. And we say that in your name. Amen. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you Pastor McPhail. Moving on to item 1.4, City Clerk Report on Posting of the Agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The agenda was posted on Friday, February 28th, at 11:54 a.m.
Thank you, Bryce. Moving on to 1.5, Roll Call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Bozo.
Here.
Moving on to 1.6, Orders of the Day. So, I have a little announcement. So, we would like to do item 10.1, which is on the agenda. 10.1, we would like to make it time certain, that we would like to do that right around 7:00 p.m., and that is the way we're going to do it as we progress in these meetings where we have these public hearings regarding the districting, and we would like to make them time certain so that people of the public know that it's going to happen right around 7:00 o'clock. So, for those that can't make it at 6:00 o'clock, they don't have to worry. So, remember that for the future, and today, 10.1 is at 7:00 p.m. Moving on to item 1.7, Employee Introductions. I believe we do not have any. And then next, a quick little announcement. Last week, if those that you were here, we did something a little bit different. We have to go into closed session early in this meeting, and so instead of asking everybody to leave, we are going to leave the room for about 10 or 15 minutes, hopefully less, and then come right back in and get started with the meeting, just like we did last week. So, with that being said, moving on to item number two. City Attorney Jolie, can you please read the closed session item and provide instructions on the closed session?
Pursuant to the Gilroy City Code 17A point 11, based on advice of its legal counsel and a motion invoked in open session to assert the attorney-client privilege to confer with or receive advice from its legal counsel regarding pending litigation with discussion in open session concerning those matters would likely and unavoidably prejudice the position of the city in that litigation. So, you need to take a vote in open session for that, and you also need to see if there's any public comment.
Thank you. Bryce, do we have any public comment on closed session?
We have no comment speakers.
Okay. Can you take roll call, please, for closed session?
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yeah.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. I'm sorry. Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes. Any public, we did public comment, no public comments, so we can move into closed session. Okay.
See how people pull up like that? And then, no, the option should, so then like, you kind of look for which one's yours, you know? Right? Okay, you can see it. No, from the name. This is why I put the beginning sort of like, yeah. But that's okay, you can just.
The name right there.
Right. Yeah. So, then if you do that, it will be the last one.
Okay.
Because it's the last one.
Okay.
Yeah. See, like, that's.
Yeah.
See, when you pull it down, forget it, you need to pull it down.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience. Jolie, can you report on the closed session?
Yes. We're reconvening to the regular. I don't think they work.
Yes, they do.
Are they working?
Very well.
Oh, okay. So, we are reconvening to the regular meeting, and I can state that there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, Ceremonial Items, Proclamations and Awards. And number 4.1, we have a presentation of Retirement Proclamation to Scott Barron. Okay. Whereas Scott Barron has honorably served the City of Gilroy as code enforcement officer for over 24 years, dedicating a remarkable 27 years to the public service, and whereas throughout his tenure, Scott has applied his expertise to uphold community standards, ensure compliance with zoning ordinance and municipal codes, and enhance public safety in our beloved city, and whereas Scott is deeply respected by his colleagues for his extensive knowledge of code enforcement, his unwavering commitment to public service, and his collaborative spirit that fosters a positive teamwork environment, and whereas Scott has made substantial contributions to the success of our community, providing invaluable guidance and unwavering support to both residents and his fellow colleagues, and whereas Scott prepares to retire from the City of Gilroy on March 7th, 2025, he looks forward to pursuing personal interests, cherishing quality time with his family and friends, and embracing new adventures in this exciting chapter of his life. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire City Council, employees, and residents of the Gilroy, join in thanking Scott Barron for his retirement commitment of service and wish him well in retirement for years to come. Thank you.
Just a couple of words. I don't want to bore anybody, but I want to say thank you to the City of Gilroy. I've been here a long time. It's been a privilege. Served under a lot of different people here at the city and got to know a lot of things. They've taken good care of me in many ways, and I've tried to do the same for the city as I go out into work in code enforcement, which is what I've done. So, it's been a great privilege, and I thank you all for it. You as.
One, two.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, council correspondence. There is none. Moving on to number six, presentations to council. Public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the city council. Any public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have two. First Anne Marie McCauley, followed by Jack Daly.
Thank you.
Hello. As elected leaders of a diverse community, it's important to understand the threads that make up its fabric and not just the overall cloth. While we can all qualify ourselves by knowing, working, and teaching or being married to people who are not white, the impact of being a person of color is communicated in many ways that we aren't always aware of. We do not need to get defensive and we do not need to qualify ourselves. We simply need to show up and acknowledge that what they are telling us is real. We need to engage with organizations like Caris, Nueva Vida Community, and Latino Family Fund to be part of the dialogue and listen before we speak. A man will never understand what it's like to be pregnant. It's impossible for him to project situations that a pregnant woman in the workplace might need. Does this make him a misogynist? Of course not. He simply gives women a seat at the table to help make these decisions. Santa Clara County is now creating groups with lived experience to help understand solutions for post-incarceration homelessness and addiction. Why? Clearly, they have insufficient ideas with respect to how to solve these problems. If you would like to show the community you can represent it completely, do it with actions, and reach out to these organizations. How many of you called any of these groups and asked them how they felt about districts and if they felt represented by the city leadership? If not, why? An example, the youth at Caris has been advocating for a youth center for years. No other organization has done this. How many of you have reached out to the Caris youth and asked them what they need? How many of you have been to the many posadas at San Ysidaro Park and asked the families and organizations what they need from the city? Have you asked them if they feel represented and if not, how you could do better? I know many of you have done the work on different levels and I'm in no way accusing anyone of not doing this. I'm simply suggesting that if you feel insecure about public opinion in regards to your ability to represent our community, these are things that might change that. Thank you.
Next is Jack Daly, followed by third speaker Ron Kirkish.
My name is Jack Daly. I live here in Gilroy in Village Green. The reason I'm here is it all started back in June when we were talking about passing Measure C. And I thought, well, unfortunately, it didn't pass, so I thought the chance to get a new fire station was gone with the wind for a while. And then a couple of weeks ago, in the Mercury News, there was an article that said that the cheers broke out in the council chamber when they found out that, I think it was, what is it, Loma Linda had dedicated some money for the fire department. Before that, I thought, I don't know how big a lot they had for this new building. And my thought was, why don't they build a building that was big enough, then you could put a fire station in and a police substation in the same building? You know, that would have to be thought out by the fire chiefs and the experts. I'm not an expert on that. But that was what I was thinking about. And then there's usually an ad on the TV about these steel structure buildings and it shows snippets of the different designs that they have. And I thought, well, something like that would be perfect. They could build the building, put the fire department on one side, a police substation on the other part of the building. And maybe in the middle, they could have the communications rooms and all that kind of stuff. It would have to be determined by the fire department and the police department as to how it would be manned, you know? Whether it's 24 hours for the police, I know it would be for the fire department. And, but I think, I think that train has passed. Somebody said they had already started plans for the new fire station. So, I guess that was it. Then another thing that came to mind was Gourmet Alley. All summer long, we drove down Fifth Street and Sixth Street and looked down Gourmet Alley to see what was going on. When they finally dedicated it, the lady that gave the dedication said, "This was great for the city of Gilroy, for the merchants." And I said, "Well, I'd go down and take a look at it." Well, I was disappointed in what I saw. It looked just like they had paved the street, made the street night, but they didn't do anything else except hide the garbage cans and put a flower pot with a seed on it.
Thank you, sir. That's your three minutes. That would be your three minutes. That's the bell for your three minutes of speaking. Thank you. That is your time. That's your time limit. I'm so sorry.
I was thinking about the Gourmet Alley.
Can we meet, I can meet with you after and I can hear more one-on-one what you would like to talk about? Because you went past your time limit already.
My time's up?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's why I wanted to go in the open. I had the same thing last time.
I promised to get with you. I will get with you.
Started talking and Mayor Blankley said, "Your time's up," so I said, "Well, the hell with it. I'll go home."
No, no, no. Let's get together. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next up is our final speaker, Ron Kirkish.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay? Very good. Everybody complains they can't hear me. So, anyway, I just wanted to thank City Administrator Forbes. A couple of meetings ago, he said that Union Pacific was going to clean up the RV park and by the 24th, and they did. It's not 100%, but it's 90, I would say 95% cleaned up. There's still a RV parked in the street and there's actually a homeless tent encampment up against the fence on the street that needs to be addressed. But in any case, they did a very good job. They put barricades up too. So, thank you, Mr. Forbes, and did a good job. Thank you.
Any further public comment? No other speakers. Okay, I will close public comment and moving on to item number seven, reports from council member on committees. Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Fugazi?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Ramirez?
No report.
Councilmember Klein?
No report.
Okay, and I have no report. Moving on to item number eight, the consent calendar. Any member of council members have comments or questions? None? Okay, public com-
Public comments, sorry.
Yep, thank you. Tom, public comment?
We have no speakers at this time.
Okay, if we have no speakers on public comment, I'm looking for a motion on the consent calendar of items 8.1 and 8.2.
I motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Klein. I have a second by Councilmember Bracco for items 8.1 and 8.2. Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Thank you, Bryce. A motion passed at 7:0, excuse me. Thank you, Bryce. 6:0, excuse me. Thank you. Moving on to bids and proposals, we have none. And so now we are already at item 10. And as I said earlier, for some of those of you who are not here, we've decided to wait till as close as we can, till 7 o'clock, so members of the public can be here for item 10.1. So, we are going to move on a little bit to items number 11. And moving into unfinished business, item 11.1, it's a special event ordinance update and we have a staff report by Victoria Valencia, Economic Development Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the public. My name is Victoria Valencia, Economic Development Manager for the city of Gilroy. The purpose of today's report is to update council on the progress of refining the special event ordinance and permitting process to ensure consistency, transparency, and financial sustainability. The proposed changes address concerns from event organizers, city departments, and community stakeholders. Today, I'll provide an overview of event guidelines, economic impact of downtown events, city costs associated with downtown events, and proposed event zones. Council's being asked to discuss continued fee waivers and the establishment of these event zones. So, a little background, at the August 19, 2024 council meeting, staff identified challenges with the special event process. Council directed staff to review costs and return with event templates and standards to ensure consistent and transparent permitting process, improve safety and traffic management for large events, and establish clear guidelines for event organizers. So, staff is currently working on a set of general guidelines for event organizers. We sent a survey out to 26 of the event organizers from 2024 and received 10 responses to help guide this process. These guidelines aim to increase transparency, reduce confusion, and improve coordination between event organizers and city departments. So, these guidelines will focus on insurance requirements, public safety requirements, alcohol regulations, fire and hazmat safety, building and ADA compliance, and traffic control and road closures. Here's a brief overview of the impact of four of our large events that occurred in downtown last year. These events had about 10,000 visitors or more, and these events weren't ticketed, so we utilized Placer AI to obtain this information. Reports from some downtown business owners also indicate a significant increase in foot traffic and revenue during these major events, with several businesses reporting their highest daily sales on these days. So, you can see Tamal Festival, Holiday Parade, Garlic City Car Show, and La Afrenda, both saw an increase in visitors. The average Saturday downtown visitation was 5,400 visits. And then here's a map that shows approximately where people are coming from. So, visitor data indicates that approximately 40 to 50% of the attendees are Gilroy residents, with the Holiday Parade drawing the highest local participation at 62%. The remaining visitors came from neighboring cities, the broader Bay Area, and occasionally from out of state. This map and the information I gathered demonstrates the regional draw for Gilroy downtown events. Here is a review of city costs for the events. Following previous council's direction, fees related to special events held by nonprofit organizations in and adjacent to the downtown area have been waived. This was a total of $154,089 for events held from June to December 2024. Currently, no fees are set for processing applications, so these fees are just for the day of what the staff cost was. So, police officers, $41,973, traffic control, $107,000, and that was also, that was setup, cleanup, and roadblocks, K-Rail rentals, as well as the staffing. So, that amount is expected to decrease in future years due to the purchase of the Meridian Rapid Defense barricades. Our fire marshal costs are up there as well. And then getting back to the no-set fees for processing applications, on average, economic development staff spends about 15 hours on downtown events, five hours on events outside of the downtown, and applications are also reviewed by planning, building, fire prevention, hazmat, police, public works operations, and our risk management team. So, there are several cities who have a formal process for fee waivers for nonprofit events. Policies from Morgan Hill, Monterey, Santa Clara, and Watsonville were all included in your packets for reference and consideration. So, since June 2024, there's been an impact to the general fund of approximately $154,089 based on day-of event costs for police officers, traffic control teams, and fire inspections. And fiscal impact of any direction by council regarding ongoing fee waivers or applications of fees will be analyzed before adoption. Moving on here into event zones. Currently, event organizers can request to close any street in the downtown area. The permit does require a traffic control plan to be submitted, but a certified plan can be costly and can often be a barrier to hosting an event. Due to safety concerns, city staff has taken over creating traffic control plans and providing road closure, staff and devices. And because there is inconsistency with event areas downtown, staff often has to recreate the traffic control plans for each event. Staff is proposing designated event zones and standardized traffic control strategies to improve efficiency and safety. Staff researched areas in downtown that could be utilized for community events that would lessen the impact on traffic circulation and emergency response times outside of an event area, as well as address concerns from downtown business owners. So, up on the screen is an overview of all of the areas. The event zones that we'll show you next are, they favor city-owned parking lots and Gourmet Alley. They reduce traffic control costs and can be reduced or combined for larger event footprints. So, the first zone that we have would be known as the Gourmet Alley Zone. This is, in the red up there, is the limit of the zone. Parking lots can be closed off individually or together with the addition of Fifth Street. Fifth Street closure would be recommended a minimum of 1,500 attendees. And a variation of this zone was used for the GDBA Beer Crawl in October. So, the next zone is the Sixth to Seventh Street Large Event Zone. To close Sixth Street, we're recommending a minimum of 25, Sixth to Seventh Street, excuse me, on Monterey Road. We're recommending a minimum 2,500 attendee limit, and then these individual areas can also be combined for larger event closures, or they can be individually reserved. And those areas for reference are the Hornline Court, the Donald Prado Pop-Up Park, and the Gourmet Parking Lot. This zone is Lewis to Sixth Street. This would require a minimum of 2,500 attendees. We saw this setup at Downtown Live this year. And then this zone would be what would be allowed for the larger events, 5,000 attendees or more. This is the Fourth to Seventh Street closure. We saw this type of setup at La Afrenda and the Garlic City Car Show. All right, so there are still some things to work out prior to updating the actual special events ordinance, which I'll be bringing back to council at a later date. However, event applications are already being submitted and staff is looking for direction from council to be able to continue to process those applications. So, key points for discussion tonight, should staff continue to waive fees for community events hosted by nonprofits? Should the city adopt downtown event zones to aim in cost reduction and special event permit streamlining? And should staff proceed with drafting a new fee waiver policy? So, next steps, if directed by council, staff will return in April with a draft fee waiver policy and staff will hold a meeting with past event organizers to update them on changes that have been made to the current process, as well as gather feedback on proposed event zones and ordinance updates. And this concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions from council? Councilmember Fugazi?
Few questions. I know we discussed it when we approved the ballards, but it wasn't in your report. How much do you believe the cost will go down in traffic control now that we have those ballards out of that 150,000 and change?
Sure, so, trying to recall the numbers off the top of my head, so, sorry about that. So, with the zones, it's expected to go down to a couple of thousand dollars per event. Right now, events are averaging 20 to 30,000 dollars in costs. So, we're looking at significant savings, just depending on the different event zones. So, we're looking at significant savings, just depending on the different event zones.
You're saying, sorry, you said it's twenty thousand dollars per event on average, and we've got ten events, that's two hundred thousand dollars.
I think the big events cost, the big events cost that much.
Or costs more, yes. So, sorry, I don't have that report with me tonight.
The next question is, it seems like compared to some of the events that we've had, these now include a lot of parking lots, right? And have you studied the defensibility of the parking lots versus the roads? Because it seemed when we approved the bollards, it seems like a very good idea because the roads get everybody enclosed. As soon as you have the parking lots and the pop-up park and everything else, it seems like you now create a situation where we have less defensibility to the public.
Yeah, so, I would say that the parking lots are raised typically. You have to go up a ramp. They are a little bit easier because they're not within the normal traffic flow of anyone who's driving through downtown. The gourmet parking lot specifically has two gates that can be closed to vehicular traffic, and we'd still be able to utilize those barriers within the parking lots on Fifth Street. So, it doesn't, doesn't take away from their usability.
Okay. And out of all of the examples that you saw that were in the report, do you have any guidance for us as to which one you think best fits our, you know, our city or had some of the elements that you thought were best?
I think all of them have their unique qualities. It's really going to depend on the general fund allocation and how we, how much we want to put towards this. I will say that I know a lot of these events take longer than the six months to plan, so it would just be setting a timeline for event applications to be turned in, sticking with that timeline, and just providing clear guidance ahead of time.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, okay. Just a couple of questions. The zones that you provided, how often or do you ever get applications that are, you know, different? Because these are the standard ones typically that come in. Do you get applications that don't fit into these identifiable zones?
Yeah, absolutely. That's the issue we're trying to resolve because almost every application comes in with a different proposed zone, so.
But, but for the most part, they could probably all fit into these zones, right?
They could fit, yes, yes.
Okay, so, and then in reviewing the different cities and their policies that they have, they are all unique, some are a little bit more comprehensive in nature. But what I liked about a couple of them was that, and I, and I forget which one, if I made note, let's see, I think Santa Clara was the one that said that the applications need to be submitted ninety days prior, but the other ones had like a deadline for the entire year. And I would tend to favor something more like that because then that way, if, if council decides that we're going to allocate X dollar amount, then we know the applications that are coming in, we can kind of figure out how we want to allocate those, rather than as they come in through the year and then as we get towards the end of the year, we're out of money. So, I would advocate for something similar to the other cities that had something submitted prior to the budgeting process.
Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
I know, I, being part of a nonprofit and planning an event and knowing the process of going through this, we're talking about downtown with these zones, and they're great. I like that because it gives whatever group, you know, how big they want, they can look at that as a guide. So, I really like the, the idea of that. But then, how about at Christmas Hill or at other places in the city? Because this is going to apply everywhere, correct? So, how will you, fee schedules like at Christmas Hill or other places where it's having it, how will you address those type of things? You'll create that too?
Thank you, Tom, Councilmember Klein. So, our parks are under our recreation team, and they have a separate permitting process.
Okay, that's fine. So, and, so it won't be tied correlate, correlating to this at all then?
Not necessarily.
Specifically, it's just downtown specific, okay?
Or events happening outside of city parks.
Or outside of city parks, okay, getting straight with that, okay, all right. The fee reduction and waiver policies are, in essence, oops, my, those that you showed us in those other cities, those are in essence mostly grants, right? In essence, is what you're, you're talking about and having these groups apply for that. I like the idea of it being a deadline so that it covers the whole year because we're budgeting for the whole year. This gives you the idea, you have a hundred fifty thousand budgeted for that, and the groups can apply for whatever that is, what they need, ten thousand or whatever they, they're looking for. So, I like the idea of that being a one-time, deadline specific on the time of the year, so, that makes sense.
Thank you.
I have a comment or a question. By creating these different zones that you have, that it seems to me that you would use those zones to advise groups that would be site-specific and number-specific to use those zones, and because of that, are you hoping for a cost savings? So, like in the past, if you, you may set up for an event that's, you know, much larger, you need more traffic control, more law enforcement than, than the organization even needed. Is that the hope?
Yeah, the hope is to have cost savings, absolutely. And to be able to predetermine these zones, we'd be able to do those traffic control plans ahead of time and provide those to the groups, so they're not wondering which streets they can close off, what's needed for that.
Any further?
Just one more. One other thing that I, that popped out on those reports, I'm just looking at my notes again, is the, the follow-up, right? And so, given that it would essentially kind of be a grant, there would be a follow-up report if they anticipated, you know, five thousand people attending, what were your actual numbers, that type of thing, so that we can then, for the following year, take all of that type of stuff into account. And then it also kind of gives them a little bit more structure for their own event to evaluate it moving forward. So, I would advocate for that piece in there as well.
So, we are not looking for action tonight on this item, so just looking for some, you know, direction from council or guidance or a thumbs up if, if they like what they're hearing so far. If can, can staff continue, continue down this path that they've begun? I'm so sorry, public comment on this.
Yes, Mayor, we have four speakers. First, Jeff Worth, followed by Jay Sanchez, and then Susan Mester.
All right, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The City Council has made it very clear that they want Gilroy to be a destination location. That's been a recurring theme over the past few years. And what you, what you, how you create a destination location here is through wineries, the outlets, eventually Shark Ice, Gilroy Gardens, the hiking and outside experiences, and then you've got Gilroy Downtown, which is the heart of Gilroy. The Gilroy Downtown Business Association focuses on a downtown that's perceived as both safe, clean, attractive, entertaining, and a place where people want to come with their, as couples, families, their dogs, to come down, have a good time, and be entertained. The GDBA does four major events each year that actually involves in thirteen because we have the Art and Wine Walk, the ten downtown live concerts, the Beer Crawl, and the Holly Festival and Parade. And what we've experienced, and I love Virginia's map, that shows that not only are we creating an environment where people locally are coming to discover or rediscover our downtown in a real positive way, but we're also drawing people from significant distances. People are taking notice of what's happening in Gilroy. Now, the GDBA runs, the events that we run, we run it, we're not running it for profit. What we're doing is, we're barely making enough money to actually put on the events. Every dime you bring in gets spent on the actual event. The problem is escalating costs of the fire, the police, in some cases, fire, and the barricade has made it so cost prohibitive that it's impossible. We would literally go under. And I want to tell you that at this point, I want to thank Jimmy Forbes and the entire City Council for the support last year. Because you waived the fees last year, we made it possible to put on really class events. We saw attendance rising, we got a lot of positive comment from people, and that wouldn't have happened if we didn't have your support. We wouldn't be here today to be, to talk to you. So, I just want to thank you for that, and I'm just hoping that we can get your continued support for this year. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jay Sanchez.
Hello, City Council, Mayor, Victoria, great report. I'm Jay Sanchez, I'm also with the GDBA. I also happen to be the chair this year of Downtown Live, I was the co-chair with Jeff last year. I am an outsider for Gilroy, so I just happen to see all the events by being on the board. I'm also opening the Psycho Donuts that'll be coming downtown sometime soon. I come from Campbell, that's our city, and they have very similar events like this, right? We have the, the Boogie on the Bayou and our May Fest, I forget what it's called already because I haven't done it for two years, but very similar. Close down the street, a lot of, I wouldn't say resistance, but definitely concern for a lot of the attendees down there, and as Gilroy grows to be much like Campbell, and much that might be a slight, but the attendance there is a lot. It's forty thousand people, right? We're talking about five thousand people. And the police are very much concerned, as they should be, with what can happen. The road is the main street, is the same here. I wrote a lot of notes based on what I had known prior, talking about having police presence, which is very important, Campbell obviously recognizes that, having gone through it last year and the year before. There's plenty of money being spent there that the city waived, which was helpful. We do pay for our own security, one armed, one unarmed, and there hasn't really been any issues for the last two years over ten events and over the other events that I attended. With downtown, especially a reason for being on the GDBA, again, is opening up a store, is the attractiveness of what's going on downtown. This is, to me, the way I saw it, is like Gilroy is growing so much, and it's not just the last bastion, it's the first bastion for growing. If you're going to attract more vendors like ourselves to come to downtown, they need to see the vibrancy. They need to see the city partnership with its nonprofits, especially the GDBA is the leader for, obviously, downtown, and supporting the events. The financial stability of these events is highly dependent on having these fees waived. I disagree hearing this grant program, how it would work, that's not the way to go. You're basically opening up some kind of a favoritism that could happen. In Campbell, I'm not exactly sure how it goes, but having volunteered for almost nearly all events over the last four years, since being a part of Psycho Donuts, it's mostly based on, you know, getting involved, like everybody should do. If you want some economic impact, you should be involved, and joining the boards or joining the associations that are throwing them on. La Afrenda, I think, was the first real big year that was handed off from the GDBA from prior years. I think it had a different name. But those kind of events get born from downtown and they expand. Some of the other things we're talking about is like adding farmer's markets, adding more events that we can handle, and then working with our partners as well. A lot of the stuff that we have innovated using our stage and these templates that came up, you know, are sinking in. So, I think we should continue with a freeness of it and then coordinate what else would work out right on time.
Next speaker is Susan Mester.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Susan Mester. I am a frequent attendee and participant in downtown events, volunteering as well. And I, I'm curious about one thing. Victoria talked about an increase in numbers and participation. I'm curious as to how that turns into revenue for the city with the restaurants, with retail, maybe TOT. She mentioned some people are coming from distances far away. So, I kind of like to see numbers on that. But in general, I would just like to say that for these nonprofits, it's a chunk for the city. And I like to say it's not always about the money. As I'm hearing, it's about how we want to present ourselves as a city, as a community, fun, lively, Downtown Live. So, I am encouraging you to continue with this waiver for special events, especially when we are considering nonprofits' Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
We've had two additional speakers. First, Sally Armandares, followed by Maria Aguilar.
Hello, my name is Sally Armandares, and I'm one of the coordinators for the Gilroy Annual Tamal Festival. And the, I just wanted to mention that it's probably one of the biggest festivals that we're having right now in Gilroy, and it's always been very successful. And the thousands of people that attend the Tamal Festival brings tens of thousands of dollars to our downtown businesses, including the sales tax that, that the city can enjoy after a Tamal Festival. I can probably say that KARA supports the proposal to streamline, to streamline the process and waive the fees. And I want to say that the staff, the Gilroy City staff and the Gilroy Police Department have always been very helpful with the Tamal Festival, and I'm glad that we're able to work with them. And it would be nice if the City Council would once in a while acknowledge that they do have the Tamal Festival. It's the biggest festival in our city, and that it represents our community, and it's a free event. There is no charge to the community. Just wanted to mention that, and we do support the streamlined processing of a fee waiver. Thank you. Sorry, I have a sore throat.
And next speaker is Maria Aguilar.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and residents of Gilroy. My comment goes to special events, but more about downtown. When are we going to fix those empty boarded-up buildings? Because if you want folks to come here and then they look at those boarded-up buildings, that really gives off a bad impression. Thank you.
And we've had one additional speaker come in, Melanie Reynison.
Thank you. I am representing the Gilroy Downtown Business Association, and this is regarding the special events ordinances being proposed. So, we're, wanted to say that we are in favor of the waiving of fees. It really does help the nonprofits be able to put on events downtown. So, we have about thirteen that we do the last two years, thirteen per year. So, it does help us to be able to afford it. As you know, there's like rising costs and everything. So, to put on a special event does take a lot from the volunteers, all of our different partners. We rely on sponsorships, so anything can help. The other thing that we are in favor of is the zones that are being proposed. So, I do think that that will really help streamline the process, help with ensuring safety. So, if we have designed, you know, options for where events can be held, it'll really help everybody. So, we are in favor, and we just wanted to show our support. Thank you.
And that is our final speaker.
Thank you very much. Okay, additional council discussion? Councilmember Fugazi?
So, I think there's an incredible benefit for all of these events, and as a resident, I definitely enjoy attending all of these events. I think that standardization is really good. I was, that's the reason I asked the question, which city? I thought Watsonville did a really good job of being very comprehensive in everything that they put in there. I do think that every event has something a little bit different about it, and the activities that happen in each event are a little bit different. It's obvious something like a Beer Crawl is going to involve a lot of people drinking alcohol because it's called a Beer Crawl. So, if we can standardize how much security and other things that we need according to the type of events that we have, and also probably according to history that we have because we build history. And so, if we have negative events happening at certain kinds of events because more alcohol is served or these kinds of things, then we should build that into the program, in my opinion, to be able to have more security in those, but not penalize other events which don't by having to over-secure those. So, I would hope the staff would look at how that goes together. And I just want to say again, I, I do have a concern about the safety for residents in terms of some of the horrible things that have happened. I'm very much in favor of the bollards that, that we put forth, and I think it shows that as, as a city, we are really in favor of doing more and more of these kinds of things. Let's just try to make it more standardized and easy for people to, to know what they're going to have to pay, how much we're going to pay as a city, that it's not a never, you know, never-ending amount, and codify it somehow or another. Thank you.
Additional comments, questions? So like I tried to say earlier before I made a mistake, sorry, we're not taking action on this tonight, but staff is looking for some direction. And one thing I think I'm hearing from the community is that there's a concern about, you know, for the past year or so, City of Gilroy has been waiving fees. And I know there is some terminology in there about grants, which I know that makes people nervous. And so maybe some direction from council is, I get the feeling that council is not looking at grants.
Right. I think the term "grant" that has been used, I was using a word that was used in one of the city's protocols or requirements. It's not a grant that you apply to and we make a decision, yes, this festival gets a grant, this festival doesn't. What it does is by allowing, by having all of the festivals applied by the end, you know, by the end of the year for the following year, then we, as a council, know how many festivals there will be. We have an idea of the cost. And then we can decide whether or not we can cover, waive those costs again for all of those festivals. We build that dollar amount into the budget. So I don't, I know that there was a concern about the term "grant", but it, I don't think it was meant, when I was reading that city, I don't think it was meant in an application process. And I certainly did not understand it to mean that. I think it was just, we're going to waive the fees based on the dollar amount that we have for all of these festivals.
So Councilmember Klein?
I was just going to piggyback Councilmember Fugazi, what he said. And the bollards are going to help to bring the cost down because it's not going to take as much to set it up. So that goes a long way to helping. And I think the zones will also help the planners plan better and help with the costs and understanding that. So whether it's grants, whatever you want to call it, I'm in favor of, you know, looking at, setting that, knowing what we're going to be confronted with in the sense of what the costs are involved with the different nonprofits, and knowing how to budget with that. And where we need to make some adjustments, we can do that. But we have to understand those costs too. And that helps. The more information we get with the numbers, it'll help us to be able to go in a direction to help everyone, so.
Okay, then I think, I think that council is giving direction to staff to continue the work that they've done from last year, continue exploring how to secure and provide traffic controls to the downtown events. And at this point, continue the practices of last year as there are no fees, right? We are not taking action on that, but we are going to give guidance to council to continue down that path. Does that sound okay, everybody? Okay, then there's your guidance. Thank you. Okay, so now that it's past 7 o'clock, we are going to jump back to item, to public hearings. Item number 10, public hearings. 10.1, let me read it. It's a little bit long. Hold the first public hearing regarding the city's transition from an at-large to a district-based election system for the purpose of receiving public input on the potential contours of the new districts and hearing the demographer's presentation on the transition process and the drawing of district maps for the November 26 and 28 elections. So what that means, we're going to have some comment from City Attorney. And after that, we're going to ask a translator to come up and just briefly explain to the Spanish speakers exactly what we're doing tonight. Hopefully, you can repeat sort of what we're saying. And that there are Spanish-language translation available. She'll say that. So why don't I go ahead and let City Attorney take it away?
Yes. So tonight, you will be receiving a presentation from the city's demographer, and it's going to be...
Can we pause? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's taken. My mistake.
Buenas noches. Si hay alguien que quisiera escuchar esto en español, por favor acércase aquí a la mesa y con gusto lo podemos interpretar todos simultáneamente. Gracias.
Yeah, looks like there are none at this moment. Okay, thank you for doing that. Take it away.
So you'll be, our demographer, the city's demographer, will be putting on a education PowerPoint to allow you to understand what it means to go to districts, what are communities of interest, how do you draw districts, what are the criteria? And this is information that the council has received, but now it's time for the public to receive the same information. So they will go through that. The one thing that, if you're going to make comments after she gives the presentation, you should look at communities of interest, and that's a defined term. And what are those communities of interest? What would the boundaries be? And that is what you start thinking about before you even get into the map drawing. And we have to have two public hearings to sort of just discuss what are communities of interest before we're even allowed to draw maps. There's also, council will be receiving some input from the public on this other item. Should there be six districts and the city retain its directly-elected mayor? Or should there be seven districts where the city council members select the mayor on a rotating basis? That isn't going to have to be decided tonight, but it's something for the community to give input on that as well. And so I'm going to turn it over to Districting Partners, and she will put on her presentation.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to say one more comment before you go. So thank you very much for being here this evening. Appreciate it. For the public, I want to remind the public that this is the first of currently five scheduled public meetings. So I want the public to know that tonight is about ideas, ideas, ideas. There will be plenty of chance for the public to speak. So there's, there are no, the idea about tonight is decisions. For example, at one moment, she mentioned two public hearings. She was referring to two public hearings before we make a couple directional moves. But there will be a minimum of five public hearings that everybody here will be invited to. So I wanted to let everybody know that before you take it away.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Liz Stitt. I'm with Redistricting Partners. We're going to be covering a slew of things tonight. And as mentioned, this is the first of five meetings. And the point of the first two meetings is to educate everyone, make sure we're all familiar with how the districting process works, and to garner, and to garner input from the public. And it's wonderful to see so many people here tonight. Hopefully, you all, well, most of you at least, will be able to comment on things like your community of interest. So what we're going to go over tonight are things like the California Voting Rights Act, how that applies here, what districting and redistricting are. We'll talk a little bit about the Federal Voting Rights Act. We'll get into what gerrymandering is and why we're avoiding that, required redistricting principles that we use. And then we'll get into your city's census data and the public hearing schedule. So first of all, why we're here tonight, the California Voting Rights Act. Now, this sounds like a really large piece of legislation, might have a lot of bits to it. But honestly, it's simply a state law that prohibits at-large election systems if there's evidence of racially polarized voting. And that's basically it. So at-large in this definition is anything other than a system in which elected officials live in a district and is only elected by members of that district. So we've seen other cities use things like, prior to their districting, use things like where voters can vote for all of the members or voters are in a district but can vote for all of the members and vice versa. And those would be considered at-large. So really, the only way to go forward in a districting process is to ensure that the members are elected within an election district and the voting public is within that same voting district. And then racially polarized voting, it's sort of a loose definition. But essentially, a way of thinking about it is if there is a minority population, or what we call a protected class under the Federal Voting Rights Act, and they vote in an opposite direction of the majority or white voters, then that is, there's likely evidence of racial polarization occurring. So California Voting Rights Act is sort of like a spiritual kin to the Federal Voting Rights Act. But it does use a standard of vulnerability differently here. So under the Federal Voting Rights Act, they use majority-minority as their standard for vulnerability. So if a jurisdiction is able to create a voting district that is comprised of a majority of a protected class, then they may be required to do that. Under the California Voting Rights Act, however, that standard of vulnerability is really lowered. So it's just the ability to influence an election. However, there is no set number for what that means. So it could be 20, 30% of the election district. And it's also one of the reasons why we see this come up so many times within the state. We also have, in the state law, plaintiffs are able to get fully reimbursed for their legal fees. That's sort of what gives this law teeth. However, we are able to limit those fees. It's capped as long as we follow the safe harbor provisions, which is what we're doing. It's why we have five meetings and ensuring that things are posted online and ensuring that we're doing everything transparently. So with that being said, what is districting? As I mentioned earlier, it really is the initial phase of just creating election districts. So one member is elected to their election district and voters within that election district vote for that member. So that's what districting is, and this is what districting isn't necessarily. So how city councils decide to govern? Now, I'm from Sacramento, and we have on our city council members doors, the neighborhoods that they represent. However, we also have had cities declare that even though they're now districted, they're going to represent the entire city. You'll still be able to do things like push legislation that allows you to work together. So this really doesn't interfere with how you guys decide to govern. It also has no impact on city services. So the only thing that districting does is change how the elections are held. And then what is redistricting? So a way to think about redistricting is it's just districting done every 10 years. So this is a large part about why we collect U.S. census data. Every 10 years, people are recounted. And then a year after that, once we get the census data back, that's when we rebalance the districts. So when you guys pick your map and it goes into effect in 2026, you'll redistrict again in 2031. The reason why we have the balance of population, the reason why we have the balance of population as the number-one priority for redistricting and districting is because it's a constitutional requirement. So when, a while ago, we had a client who hadn't redistricted in 50 years. And they had one district that was about 10,000 people and another district that was about 100,000 people. So you can tell right off the bat that it's much harder for somebody to advocate for themselves if they're in the 100,000-person district versus 10,000. You're going to have to bring out 10 of your friends just to have the same amount of advocacy power. And then, of course, there's the one-person-one-vote slew of decisions from the Supreme Court, essentially saying everybody's vote should be worth the same. So keeping that population relatively equal, very important in this process. Now, the Voting Rights Act, I'm sure everyone here is familiar with this very monumental piece of civil rights legislation. It deals with a lot about voting. And for redistricting, there are two provisions in there that deal directly with redistricting. So there's Section 2, which is the majority-minority districts provision, essentially stating that if there is a possibility to draw an election district with a majority of a protected class, they may be required to do that. Section 5, that's what we call preclearance. That's no longer active, so we won't be discussing that. So it's mostly Section 2. Whenever we talk about the Federal Voting Rights Act, that's what we're referencing for redistricting. And then again, to compare that to the California Voting Rights Act, that just prohibits at-large election systems. So there are differences, but we are going to be dealing with both pieces of legislation throughout this process. Now, the Supreme Court has set a standard for how to ensure that we are following the Section 2 provisions. And there's a test, which they call the Jingles Test, where if a jurisdiction thinks they might have to, and, you know, create a majority-minority district, these are the three tests that we have to follow. So first, is it even possible to create a district that is a majority of a protected class? And then the next step is to see if that protected class votes together, so what we would consider a voting bloc. Are they cohesive in their voting? And then the third test is, does the majority population vote against the protected class? So again, it's establishing some kind of polarized voting occurring. So we'll be working closely with legal counsel throughout this process to ensure we're following the Federal Voting Rights Act along with the California Voting Rights Act. And again, questions we're looking to answer in things like a polarized voting analysis. Does the minority population qualify under Section 2? Is the proposed district sufficient enough as a remedy? Is there a claim for a coalition district typically? California, a little less so. That's more of a southern state thing. So we'll be working closely with legal counsel to ensure we're following the Federal Voting Rights Act. And then what is gerrymandering? So usually, whenever we tell folks that we work in redistricting, they're like, "Oh, you gerrymander?" And the answer to that is, "No, I do not gerrymander." It is actually illegal. So, but we do like to show folks this image because you might think that this is a little outdated. But before California had their independent redistricting commission, this was a senate district, and it looks very similar. So we will be avoiding these, what we consider funny-looking shapes. And I'll be getting into that when we go over the criteria that the state requires us to use. And then this is just a little exercise about why gerrymandering is terrible. So you can see here, there's a majority yellow and then like five yellow, four green. And most folks would think about drawing it like this. But then you get some creative people... But then you get some creative people who are, who make the green population, um, the majority. So that is, uh, what we're trying to avoid. And then we have, um, many different types of gerrymandering in the United States. Um, and the three most common we see, partisan gerrymandering, which is, um, against the Fair Maps Act. So we, that won't be happening in the state of California. Uh, but the Supreme Court did say, you know, could be legal, and they kick it back to the state. Uh, racial gerrymandering, never legal. Uh, and that incumbent gerrymandering is something that is probably the most common type of gerrymandering, where it essentially ensures that the, um, people who are currently in place are, uh, going to keep their seats. Um, that, again, is prohibited under the Fair Maps Act. So getting into the criteria that we use when drawing maps, you can see, and this is a ranked list of criteria. So it goes from most important to a little less important. Um, and it's kind of like a balancing act, and you'll see that once we start drawing maps. But first and foremost, the number one criteria is each election district has to be relatively equal in population. So we're looking at the U.S. census population when we're determining what is equal. Um, and the U.S. census population, remember, it counts everyone, so we're not, um, just looking at citizens, we're not just looking at voters, uh, but we're looking at the entirety of the population. And we do have a ten percent total deviation that we're allowed to have, um, which is fortunate. Um, Congress, for example, has the allowance of one person, uh, to be the difference in deviation, uh, which is very limiting. So this ten percent deviation will allow us to keep together more communities of interest, neighborhoods, things like that. Um, and a good way of thinking about this criteria is it's, you wanna look at it like soccer, where you just wanna shoot the ball in the goalpost, uh, and less like archery. So you do, it's not a target to get to zero. It's just as long as we can get it under ten percent, it's considered, um, it's presumed equal. And then we wanna make sure that the election districts are contiguous. So a good way of thinking about that is, it's a whole piece and we're not going from one part of the city to the other. Um, there are a couple of types of contiguity. Uh, there's literal contiguities. So that means when you look at a map and it's a whole piece, um, then it's literally contiguous. And then there's functional or travel contiguity. And that means you're able to travel freely within the district without having to leave, go around, and come in through a different way. Um, so here's an example of, uh, what contiguity is not. You can see a portion of a city, um, that's purple. It's up in, um, the north part of the city. In order for that to be considered contiguous, it needs to be touching. And then here's an example of travel contiguity. So this, um, you can see, there's a highlighted section there. That's a railroad. So the city wanted to use that as a dividing line because people wouldn't be able to freely go over that railroad. They would have to, uh, they were pretty much forced there. So use as a, uh, logical boundary. Then we wanna maintain communities of interest and neighborhoods. So this is really where the community comes to shine during this, uh, process. Uh, so defining neighborhoods is one of the most important parts. Um, we like to think of them as building blocks of an election district. So just a quick definition of what a community of interest is. It's a group of people who share similar policy concerns and would benefit from being districted together. Um, we've often seen, um, things like, obviously, neighborhoods, but also school area, attendance areas are very common. Renters, homeowners, rural areas, urban areas. These are all people who use similar resources. Um, and, uh, one of the things we hope to hear back is how the city impacts their communities of well, as well. Um, so this is sort of a subjective and open-ended, uh, definition. And it's kind of meant to be like that. So it's supposed to be inclusive, uh, but there are certain groups that would not be considered communities of interest, and I'll get to that in a second. And of course, under the Voting Rights Act, it does recognize, uh, like Latinos, Asians, African-Americans. Those are the three most common protected classes in California. However, that being said, unless it's a Section Two non-compliance issue, we can't draw districts based on race. Um, so remember, there's a lot more to, um, race than just race. So it includes things like access to, um, resources that they use, language needs. Um, so, uh, something to keep in mind when we're talking about, um, things like Section Two. And then we also wanna make sure that the lines are easy to identify. They make sense. So using natural boundaries like creeks or man-made boundaries like that railroad example, or highways are a very common, uh, man-made boundary. If a person from the public looked at a map and they saw the lines, theoretically, it should make sense. And then we wanna make, uh, we wanna ensure that districts are compact. And I'll show you an example. Um, now, there are some states that use mathematical equations or academics who study compactness. Uh, and then you have states like Idaho that literally wrote into their constitution that they outlaw funny shapes. In California, we have a definition of not bypassing nearby population for a more distant one. So if they're similar in communities, we should be looking to our neighbors before we go across the city. This is an example of something that is not compact. And in all fairness to the city, this was drawn before the Fair Maps Act came out. And the compactness requirement is sort of inspired by this map. Um, so this map, it goes from one tail of the city to the next, and it does that like ribbons. So we're looking at something that snakes through. Um, and it just so happens that all of the incumbents kept their seats. Then, um, the members of the public, after seeing that map, they decided to get a, um, independent redistricting commission. And this is the map that they created. So you can see that it keep, like, just innately looking at it, it keeps together more communities. So all the downtown neighborhoods are kept together as much as possible. Um, far more compact. So what we're shooting for is circles and squares, and we're trying to avoid things like ribbons. So what we cannot consider as communities of interest, um, political candidates, incumbents, uh, we can't draw maps that advantage a party. Um, we have to hold a minimum set of hearings. Uh, and then all of this will be posted on your website. I know that staff is working on creating a website now. Now, website, uh, needs to be maintained for ten years. Um, but everything on that website's gonna be your resource for everything districting. Um, so it'll include things like the calendar, uh, past meetings, so uploading video content. Um, I know you'll be getting Districter, which is a wonderful mapping tool. So the public will have the opportunity to submit their own maps during this process. And we'll talk about that at the next meeting. And then real quick, we'll go over your, um, uh, census data. This is obviously the city at large. Now, whenever you see maps from us, you're always gonna get two data sets. You're gonna get the 2020 census data, and we have to use the 2020 census data. I know it's 2025 now, uh, but we are required by law to use the most recent census data. Um, and then we have these citizen voting age population data. These two data sets are used for two different but important, uh, aspects in districting. So the 2020 census data is what we use to determine if a map is relatively equal. So again, we're, we're trying to get to less than ten percent, uh, total deviation. And then citizen voting age population is what we use to determine a protected class's ability, um, to, uh, elect candidates of their choice. So that's what we use to determine things like majority-minority district or ability to influence in an election district. So that's what the DOJ uses, um, and so everyone else uses that in districting. So you're always gonna get both of those data sets, and just know that's why. So wrapping this up, obviously, today is the first hearing, and then March seventeenth, in a couple of weeks, will be your second hearing. So again, that is mostly there for educational and, um, getting input from the public. Uh, and then March seventh is when you're going to be receiving three draft maps and then all of the public submissions as well. And then the fourth hearing is where you'll, well, at the third hearing, you'll be telling us how you want changes. We'll bring back updated maps to the fourth hearing. And then if you have any changes at the fourth hearing, we'll bring it back for the fifth hearing when you take your final vote. So that is the schedule and the end of the presentation. I'm happy to take questions, and I know you do have to open it up to the public as well. So however you wanna handle that.
So yeah, I believe counsel may have some questions for you now. And then we will open up to, uh, public hearing to public comment after that. Councilmember Brock.
Yes, um, so i- if you can't take race into consideration, if you, when you're, you're looking at the city and say one section is predominantly one race, do you try to divide that area up, or you just leave it the way it is?
No, I mean, so first and foremost, we do wanna look at neighborhoods. So one of our goal is to, in fact, it's in the law, we have to keep together neighborhoods as much as possible. Um, that being said, we'll be working with legal counsel to determine if there needs to be a majority-minority district established. And if that's the case, then we would, um, uh, work with legal counsel and establish, uh, the shapes of districts to ensure that it's following the Federal Voting Rights Act. So we wouldn't be, we wanna avoid things like cracking, um, so dividing a neighborhood, um, of the same race or whatever. Um, so hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, and then, uh, you take into consideration, uh, um, the voter's party, right?
A voter's party, no. So we don't, uh, consider partisanship.
Okay, so that has the, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you. I just wanna clarify a couple of things. When you, um, and, just so that we're all understanding everything. Um, you talked about gerrymandering and, um, avoiding, um, setting boundaries where incumbents keep their seats. I get that. I just want to make sure that everyone understands, though, that, um, again, and I brought this up last week, um, the, the current sitting council remains in their seat until their term expires. So it could be that actually, there may be two people representing a district for the first two years until all districts and everyone has termed out.
Um, sort of. I'm gonna be, it's very nuanced. So there could be two people living within that, two city council members living within that district, but only one person is representing that district. The other person is at-large.
Still at-large, okay, correct. But they're still in office.
That's right. So everyone fulfills all four years of their terms.
Okay. Um, and then the other thing is, um, so the census after, um, after 2030, when the census numbers come back out, do we go through this whole process again? So we do the five hearings and the remapping and inputs and, and, and everything?
Yeah, I believe it might be four hearings, um, but it's essentially.
Relatively the same thing.
It's gonna be very similar to this process.
And then the last thing, um, I only wanna clarify this because I think there was a misunderstanding last week about census, not C-VAP. So it is ult, ultimately have to consider both, but it is predominantly based on, the, the boundaries and the districts are predominantly based on the census numbers, not the C-VAP numbers.
Yes, yeah. So, uh, the way that I think about C-VAP is, again, citizen voting age population. That is essentially devoting power of a protected class. Um, so that tells us if there needs to be a majority-minority district or it tells us the ability to influence the district. But really, when we're talking about balancing population, it's just census data.
So conceivably, like if we have, um, an area in town that has a significant amount of senior housing, um, um, versus a, an area that is, you know, closer to an elementary school or something that has a number of younger children, um, they could be equal in population, but not necessarily equal in voters.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. And those are great examples of communities of interest.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fugazi.
On one of the slides, it described, uh, or you had described that there is a, a priority or a rank in the way in which, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, the tr- the travel contiguity, uh, takes like some of the highest precedence. Is that, was that what I understood from that, or did I get that wrong?
Uh, I believe that's right. So I think it was like number two on the list.
Okay, so it's up, up at the top.
It's up there.
So it would take quite a bit of other factors to, for instance, if you had a couple of super major roads that went through town to have a particular district cross over one of those roads? Is what you're saying?
Um, yeah, we wanna make sure that if there is a road, that's like a logical boundary, and it's deterring people from being able to cross, um, you know, that might be a, a boundary to use. But I don't know if you had any specific examples.
Like a highway or freeway or something of that nature?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question. Please, so I keep hearing the term communities of interest.
Yeah.
I'm really trying to learn that.
Yeah.
And, um, it sounds like to me that you're suggesting that there's a, it's a broad definition.
It is.
So even a group of people, they can define themselves as a, as a community interest. So what if, if it's a, a group of people that define themselves as, um, all of the kids who go to, in our, in our community, we have a, a junior high school called Brownell Junior High School. Is that acceptable?
Um, yes. So one of the things that we're looking for when it comes to communities of interest is, uh, can you map it? Uh, so we're looking for things like boundaries. Um, and a community of interest really needs to live in proximities to each other. They also need to, um, express how they're impacted by the city council. So they're definitely a, a community of interest when it comes to the school district. Um, however, when it comes to the city council, uh, it's a little less clear, but it, there are things that the city council can do, like, um, street safety, uh, things like that when it comes to schools. So they can be impacted by decisions made by you guys.
Okay. I tried to set you up, 'cause, 'cause our, in our community, since we have three junior highs, especially the one at Brownell Junior High, the, um, ma- the map, I would say, is very, very oddly shaped. I'm gonna just take a guess, but it's very oddly shaped, right? So what I heard you say is, somebody can start out as a community of interest, but one of the criterias next is mapping. So that might.
Yeah.
Um, immediately change the shape of that potential map.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, uh, one of the things that, uh, we'll go over at the next meeting is the mapping tool. Um, and folks will be able to draw their communities of interest so we can know exactly where they are and how that community of interest looks. they are and how that community of interest looks. We're not going to be able to maintain all communities of interest most likely. It really depends on population size and as you mentioned, the shape of it. But it is something we'll be considering and monitoring. At the end of this process, we have to write a, a report on your redistricting, on your districting. And we have to describe any community of interest that was split. So, you know, we're going to have to have justifications if they're split.
So it seems to me that in larger cities, for example, these communities of interest are probably, they probably rise a little bit higher. I know in conversation, we've talked about like, for example, parishes and things like that, right? And so if I look at like Santa Z versus Gilroy, there are a number of parishes. There are a number of, you know, there's Japan Town, there, you know, these ident, just kind of naturally identifying things. I'm imagining it's far more difficult in a smaller town like Gilroy that doesn't have those, you know, we have one Catholic church, we have, you know, one Presbyterian church, we have, you know, these different things. What would you, could you articulate, you know, I mean, we even talked about schools, how that kind of is a little bit difficult because then the lines are all weird and you can't do that. What are some examples that come to mind in a, in a smaller community like ours that can help us kind of identify what these communities of interest are as we go through this process?
Yeah. And you'd be surprised, there are some communities of interest that are just all over the state. It doesn't matter if you're a big or a small city, like homeowners and renters, I hear that almost every time. Socioeconomic, like income levels, it's even mentioned in the law, that looking at socioeconomic areas are considered a community of interest. So, and I know that, you know, there are, for example, things like, or folks like farmworkers or people who commute, so commuters are considered a community of interest because they're using roads, city resources, and they share a, generally if they're in the same neighborhood, they share proximity. So commuters, renters, rural areas versus like a downtown area, very common in smaller cities. So if there are areas that are more often, like on the outskirts of the city, that are rural, we'll be looking to make sure we identify those areas because they're going to have different needs than folks living downtown.
Okay, so I think next we'll be moving into public comment, but I would like to say regarding, she's been talking about a website and this web drawing tool that anybody in the public has access to, this is part of the outreach, that that will be on our city website as of next Monday. So that's coming within one more week. And so on the city of Gilroy website, there'll be a link to that website of the drawing map tool. Okay, so Bryce, we'll move into public comment.
Yes, Mayor, at this time we have 11 speakers.
Okay, so two minutes each, please.
Just real quick. Okay, the first speaker will be Louis Andrade, followed by Michelle Palio Sorio.
Can you restart him? He got short there. Can you restart him?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to urge this council to adhere to the California Voting Rights Act by creating voting districts that are fair, equitable, and representative of the various communities within Gilroy. My area of northwest Gilroy, the way I view it is north of First Street and west of Wren, may be considered a community of interest due to the schools that students attend, such as Rod Kelly, Mount Madonna, and Christopher High School. Another notable distinction may be seen in how homes were built in a relatively specific period of time, manner, and layout, which distinguishes us from newer developments of the southwest, as well as the legacy of those in the east, as an example. This view of communities of interest reflect tangible elements that may be observed without focusing explicitly on race, party affiliation, or religious affiliation while maintaining these existing communities. These are only a few aspects of many that distinguish us as a community and I hope that these words are taken into account when the council makes its decision.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Michelle Sorio, followed by Joanne Fiera.
Hi, good evening, Councilman Mayor. My name is Michelle Palio Sorio and I'm here to strong support of these communities of interest. I am on the Hadley and Rogers neighborhood, San Isidro. And I can tell you from having these at-large districts, it's very difficult to have representation as council. I can probably tell you, I've only seen two of you knock in my neighborhood when it comes to elections. It'd be nice to see representation. I would love to be able to be a part of this. I would like for you guys to consider an ad hoc committee to be a part of this mapping, to be able to make sure that the voices of this, of city of Gilroy are being representative. We understand that there has been other successful cities that have transitioned from at-large to districting. We know that that really does give the vibrates of the community and allows them to speak and be represented. We want to, want you to consider that as you continue to move forward in this process, to have an open, transparent process moving forward and establish a committee that represents this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joanne Fiera, followed by Sally Casas.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. A lot of my questions were answered tonight. I'm looking forward to the rest of the workshops or the, the open public hearings. But I am also a little bit nervous, but hopeful that the city council will take this task on in a really optimistic way. It can only benefit our city if we have full representation in all the areas of this city. I live on the west side by Santa Teresa. I live in a senior neighborhood. I do travel quite frequently down Sixth Street to go to the shops and the stores, as many of us do. You can't help but notice the difference in density, in the lack of parking, in the shape of the streets. When you go into the east side, from the other side of the freeway, it is even worse, you know? So we need to think of the city as a whole. This is only going to help if we follow this process. So I encourage you all to be open to it, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next is Sally Casas, followed by Kathy Chavez-Napoli.
Good evening, Mayor, and Council members and staff. My name is Sally Casas and I just want to encourage the city to, and council members to create workshops to get to know your constituents and give them plenty of training with the translation to go along with it so that everyone is a part of this great decision to where they live. I believe that preserving communities of interest is really important to the economic development of Gilroy. And I believe that also being transparent and concentrating on the voters will get you the, will give the community a goodie in voter representation. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Chavez-Napoli, followed by Joseph Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and our community members. As I spoke before, I think it's really important for you to consider when you're talking about communities of interest, some of the commercial buildings that are here because we do share that with residences and we have unique experiences. I would hope that you have, when you call this a public hearing, that there's more than just people coming and speaking, that there's some opportunity for the voters to have questions in a more, in a less formal way because it's hard to just talk about what your concerns are in three minutes. So it's more of a workshop rather than just a public hearing. Also, I'm just going to be reiterating what everyone else is saying. It's important to preserve the communities of interest and that our votes are not diluted. And we've seen that, as I said, I own property here in Gilroy, but I live in the Morgan Hill area. And we just recently had some redistricting and we did see that some of the communities of interest were destroyed by some really artificial boundaries. One of them was, if you're familiar with Live Oak High School, we have a road, half-road, and they use that as a boundary to dilute our vote and to really destroy a community of interest. So make sure that they're not just artificial political boundaries, that there are real boundaries that divide. So thank you again for looking into this. We look forward to participating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joseph Robinson, followed by Lorena Teriba.
I have to say, hello, Mayor and Council. I have to say I'm really gratified to see this presentation. It seems to anticipate the ways in which people might try to circumnavigate what, the remedy to the situation that was found, which is that there's racially polarized voting. And I think it does matter just, you know, in the sense of whether things are walkable, whether green spaces in different parts of town, these things that are recurring issues, or whether there's a community center that's walkable for, for many families. And also I think, you know, with SROs and things like that, whether, you know, the children of different people are treated as other, or, you know, whether they're saying these are our own children. And so I'm really gratified to see that. I'm just going to be keeping my eye on everything and I do hope that you guys embrace it with some optimism. It is dignifying for the city.
Next is Lorena Teriba, followed by Alberto Lustre.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lorena Teriba and I am a resident, 30 years, 36 years resident of Gilroy. I'm also a trustee at Gavlin College. I'm here to urge the county, the council, to create a deliberate, full, inclusive process for these hearings. You have to make sure that you are including every voice that wants to participate and encouraging those voices that sometimes do not participate because they don't feel like they can meaningfully, meaningfully say what they need to say. So please look at the locations where you're going to hold these hearings. Hopefully there will be a spread around the city at locations that have full and easy access to the communities in those locations. I applaud you for providing interpretation and I would like to see translation of materials as well for people to be able to read. I want you to know that this AI does not work. I am a fully bilingual individual and I cannot follow that and participate at the same time. There's, there's no way. And also to think of strategies to really dynamically incorporate discussion in those hearings, meaningful discussions. And I will always willing to participate and support you in that effort. So anything that I can do, I'll be there and I'll be participating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Alberto Lustre, followed by Sally Armaderos.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Alberto Lustre. I'm a local resident of Gilroy for about 35 years. Went to Gilroy High, Gavlin College. I lived my whole life mostly on the east side. I lived some, three years on the west side and went back to the east side. I've been a neighbor for about, since I was 15. I'm raising three kids in Gilroy. They go through three different schools from Christopher High to Elliot to South Valley Middle School. I work, I used to work in the city and now I do something else, but I just want to say that it's great that Gilroy's moving to districting. Finally, it's actually doing something that it makes sense as far as with the other cities. We always, I worked there over the Bay Area and everybody says, are you from Gilroy? Oh, Gilroy doesn't matter, it's a little town. So finally Gilroy's becoming a city, finally making the changes, right? One of the things that I want to encourage you is that I want to see that Gilroy has, makes, makes it fair for all the citizens as far as who's going to be districting. Make it fair, equal, and treat with respect and also account for the neighborhoods, also not only the neighborhoods, also their house. We never talked about who, what, are we going to account, account their house people? How are we going to do that? How are we going to do that? Also, the other issue that I wanted to say is that we should have workshops. I don't see that many people from Gilroy here. I've been here for 35 years and I can tell you probably no five people here. Back in the days when I was a town, I knew everybody. I'll come in, I knew everybody in schools, whatever it is. Gilroy's changed, so let's make some good changes. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sally Armaderos, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Yes, my name is Sally Admandares. I'm here to give you a little history of Gilroy and a little of the present. What is obvious to anyone who follows our city elections, we know that between the years of, the year 2000 and 2022, the vast majority of the candidates elected resided in the west side of Gilroy. Only a handful of the candidates that reside in the east side have entered the race. The same can be said of the election results. As you all know, the vast majority of candidates elected on the west side have very little of any knowledge that was needed on the east side. I am sure that if I asked any of you, when was the last time you went to the east side, you'd probably be at loss to answer rather than to pass out your election material. And that, that is where I go to the history, what I believe is the history of Gilroy. If you look at the east side of Gilroy, we're talking about old Gilroy. So most, there is very little new residential homes, apartments, or anything really built. While the west side of Gilroy is like a new Gilroy, you have all these new homes and therefore the amount of voters from the west side will always outnumber the amount of voters from the east side. That is what I'm talking about. And, and that is why you see the difference when you go down Santa Teresa and you go down Forest Street, the lighting, the streets, the sidewalks. The city here doesn't really care what happens to that side of town because there's no real true representation of the east side of Gilroy. And of the few candidates that have run for that office that reside in the east side, most of them have failed. And the last, and I am a native of Gilroy. He just mentioned he's been here for several years. I went to schools that some of you didn't even know existed in Gilroy. I went to Jordan, I went to Severance, I went to Brownell, Gilroy High, and Gavlin. So some of you probably haven't, because you haven't been in Gilroy long enough or cared enough enough about Gilroy to find out what's out there. Believe me, we're out there. You know, we're not, I got to read the rest of it. Our community of, let me just read it. The community of interest in the west side is greatly represented here in this council and it always has been. And it's pretty obvious, if you go on Maston Avenue after, between three and seven o'clock, you see all the commuters coming in, while the, the community of interest in the east side is and historically has been underrepresented. The distinction between the east and the west side is important because of the demographics. In the east side of Gilroy, there's a very large concentration Latino, Chicano, Mexicano, Hispanic families who share many common characteristics, that they tend to be blue collar service workers to our community. The Gilroy districts must represent community of interest residents. And by the way, since you all live on the west side, you're all invited to come and move to the east side so you can represent us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ron Kirkish, followed by Maria Aguilar.
Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, community. I want to thank the gentleman to my right and Elizabeth too for the fine job they did. My comment will be predicated on what the gentleman said and what Elizabeth said early. What concerns me in our state is in Sacramento, when they created the Voting Rights Act, it was along racist lines. And what they said, it seems to me. And what they said, it seems to me, from listening to these folks, is that we're going to assume that every neighbor, every city is going to, is going to be considered racist and that you will have to prove in a court of law that you're not. And then he goes on and says, "They've lost some of those cases." So it just doesn't seem right to me. I've spoken to a lot of people about what do they want? Do they want seven districts or a district and, and a large mayor? And everybody that I've talked to has said they would prefer the six districts and the at-large mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maria Aguilar, followed by Daniela Gonzalez-Ariano.
Mayor, City Council, and residents, everything's already been covered, pretty much. I'm just hoping that the next meetings that we do have are an open forum, maybe around two o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday, where we can have more people come and speak up because coming here at six o'clock in the evening is, is difficult for many families. The other thing, you're going to put some information on the website. Will we be able to post any questions on there and maybe get some response? Will be, will be more of, you know, interactive, I guess the word? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Daniela Gonzalez-Ariano, followed by Yvonne Martinez-Beltran.
Hi, my name is Daniela Gonzalez-Ariano. I've been a resident on the east side of Gilroy for over thirty years. I'm currently a planner. And so I see this from two sides as a resident, as a city planner. And I just want to say thank you for considering districting. I think it's a really good route to take. I've seen many cities strive on districting, making sure that representation matters. Being a resident, I have seen the division, favoritism a little bit, more so on which, what side is seen and what side isn't. It's very clear in the distinction. I think everybody here has had many great points that I'm not going to repeat because they're, they're great, they're wonderful, and I agree with all of them. And I just want to thank you for your time. And I will be seeing you in the follow-up meetings. And, oh, I just want to say, everyone says workshop. I think that's really important, to get that outreach in and focusing on areas that have less resources than most areas. So utilizing public schools is a good idea to hold workshops. Parks is a good idea to hold workshops. Just, thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Yvonne Martinez-Beltran.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So good to be with you here tonight. I am excited for Gilroy, and I'm excited for all of you as elected leaders. I am the current Councilwoman in Morgan Hill. I've been serving, I'm in my seventh year there. Served for two years before in the Planning Commission. We've gone through redistricting, and it's a tall order. It's, it's a tough, tough job, I will say, a difficult task at the very least. There's much at stake. I'd like to encourage you, encourage you that this will diversify the council and give true representation to your constituents. I have the experience running a district-wide campaign for mayor as well as, I'm, I'm sorry, a district-wide campaign twice for my district, as well as a at-large campaign for mayor. And I can attest to the incredible difference of which the amount of funds and resources are required for an at-large versus a district election. I was grossly outspent, yet still won an incredible forty-two percent of the vote in Morgan Hill, but only after working as a leader with the city for almost ten years. Imagine a new candidate and the possibility required to win. At-large election makes sense for a small community, for, for, in the past. To, but now, to open opportunities for everyday citizens to serve, we must look at other options. So it is important to ensure all of our communities are included and engaged with the city and civically engaged with the city. And this is the charge with districting. I would suggest holding workshops throughout the community and at different times, as others have done here, in languages. Also, for numerous ages. The number of, consider the number of residents living at one address, multi-generational homes, and transportation access. Thank you for your time. Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, please, our speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll close a public comment and public hearing at this time. And I'd like to open back up to Council. Go ahead, Councilmember Rocco.
I, I, I agree with what we heard here tonight about having the meetings out in the community so people can attend. We know from past meetings for different things that they're better well-attended out in the community and not down here. So I, I would ask that we do that. Different times, different locations and stuff to get the community more involved.
So, I would like to encourage those, you know, trying to get the word out is, is always a challenge. So email me if you have ideas about, you know, how to get the word out to encourage more participation from the community. I'm happy to pass that along to staff. I know Rochelle does a great job, but, you know, we need to get, it's, it's one thing to, to have a workshop, but getting the message out so that people are aware of it is, is the second piece of it. So, you know, any ideas on how to do that? And keep in mind that we are under a time restriction. This has to happen within nine?
Ninety days.
Ninety days. So, you know, we need to, to move, you know, I mean, we have ninety days, but still it's, there's still time constraints around it.
Other comments so far? I have a question for Elizabeth. One of the questions from the community was about the website. How interactive is it?
So I would look at it like it's the library of your districting. So it'll have important documents in addition to calendar. And it'll have things like a community of interest form and the districtor page. And the districtor page is actually where you get to go in and draw a map. So that is very interactive. Everything else is, it's like a log of districting. So if they have questions, there should be a frequently asked questions section, contact section, abilities to submit testimony.
But to be clear, there's no question-answer?
Right, right. Yeah, there isn't going to be like an AI chatbot or anything like that.
Okay, okay. I'll just have one more comment as others think about what they want to say. I did hear one comment from, from the community about an ad hoc committee. And I think, I think we're just, terminology's a little bit different. From a council perspective, an ad hoc is something I think we do not, definitely don't want to do. An ad hoc is almost the opposite of this. An ad hoc, it gets small really fast, and it takes a lot of time. And we don't have time, and we want this open to the public. So, but I do hear what you're saying. I think possibly the person who mentioned the ad hoc is, really was talking about open to the public, public community meetings like the other, like we also heard and Councilmember Rocco mentioned. So just to be clear, I hear you on the ad hoc. I just think that's not the right, what you want. Additional comments or questions right now? And just as a reminder, I'll just keep talking a little bit. As a reminder, this is a long process. We're all kind of digesting it as we go. At the time, we have five meetings on the schedule. We're hearing what people are saying. We're hearing what Councilmember Rocco is saying. Maybe a different setting would be appropriate as well. So we'll go back to staff and see if we can figure that out. And the best way to do that, so, okay.
Do we have an understanding of when the website for the public and whatnot will be online? I don't know exactly.
Monday.
Monday, okay.
Monday, yeah. A link from the city of Gilroy website, yeah. Okay, so I'll keep talking. Now, I, I just think it was a great meeting. We, we all got to, you know, this is the first time. This is new for everybody. Appreciate the folks who've lived through this to come and talk about and share their experience. I'm looking forward to the next meeting. The public feedback, thank you very much. We hear you guys, and we will make sure that we implement what we're hearing tonight into the process.
I, I will add.
Pardon me?
I said I will add with what Councilmember Rocco said about other places. I'm in favor of that too, getting, getting more people. And too, I, I get that because we tend to be coming here, single issue. And I know this is a single issue, but it affects us in so many ways. And so, yeah, if we can do it in some other areas of the city where it feels like more people can, can access, I'm, I'm good with that too. I think it'd be fine.
Okay, then, so if there's no further discussion on ten point one, we are going to take a quick little break. And we'll be back here in eleven minutes, ten minutes, at eight-thirty, please. Thank you.
So, want to introduce myself, good to meet you guys. And why, I understand, you know, people kind of like that. So I'm, I'm on the phone there. So, somebody, they said.
Yes, I'm a, yes, Jerry.
Oh, good.
Yes, my first job on the board and, uh, I was a, uh, part of the, uh, actually just, uh, approved in the nineteen twenty-six.
Oh, good. So were you able to, to have the funds to, to start?
So my spending has increased, uh, over the years, uh, it increases.
How are you?
Good, how you doing? Yeah. Glad you were here.
So you're a parent now?
Yeah. I used to get super talented. Hi, how you doing?
Okay, how about you?
And I was on the ballot. So I've been around for a while. But it was great to see that. And I actually helped develop the student. But, yeah, I was really happy to, to start to grow some of my, yeah.
This is the place to end up.
Yes, okay, so you have your, uh, my, I don't even know what day it is.
Harsha?
How are you? Yeah, look at you.
I was wondering. I wanted to tell you there's no, it's all just a name. Because I grew up over there. So it was like, at one time it was a church, but sadly, I know. I know. And that's actually, yeah, I mean, I came and picked the ruins here in Illinois. And related to that in Columbus. I don't know, that would have been a community of interest.
Well, and I think that it's interesting, uh, 32, especially since I was on this. It was a dream. Uh, because he can't. And, uh. Right, this next generation, they can't.
No, they can't. Well, you know what my husband and I did because our children are fifteen, I'm saying, we live in Morgan Hill now. But what we did is we bought homes from our children. And then when they were ready to buy a home, so I'm so fortunate. My grandchildren, I get to see them every week. They live in Morgan Hill in South San Jose. Because they have, each of them has two college degrees. They could not afford to work.
Well, I mean, my kids are.
Native American. My children could not afford to live on a indigenous land.
My kids, well, I have one daughter that is a, uh, named Campbell. My son and his wife, she's a professor right now, he's transitioning out. He's got a college degree. He's got two, my grandbabies, I'm helping. And then my dad goes to, uh, she just had her first baby, she's hardly saying goodbye. But now they're looking to do one month.
That's on the other side of the country.
I, it's just tearing my heart apart, you know? I thought my babies, you know, the foresight to buy houses for kids, you know?
Well, I mean, I look at it as a native American from California. So my tribe is in Susan. And, um, so my children, Morgan Center, they raised as farm workers. Even farm workers, my parents were even by a roof. They were third grade, eighth grade education. My two sons, two degrees each. There's something wrong with that whole picture of they can't that work.
Your children, everyone. My mother-in-law, father-in-law, uh, my mother-in-law hasn't changed. My father-in-law doesn't even have neighbors. They work the fields until my husband is gone. Well, my father-in-law continued to work for several years after that. Follow the fields around. They were from Texas, but they went around the, they found a map to their garden. So they went to. But, um, my husband, all of them, well, three of their four children, uh, at least the college degrees cannot, children have masters. But, you know, uh, they all love, um, spending, um, these all the five years. But again, that's right. But now their children, like my children, you know, they all have to college degrees again.
Well, that's what we're gathering, because we're just doing the other.
Yes, I, I used to teach there.
Oh, Abby, what did you teach?
English.
No, no, thank you guys for saying what you're saying. You know, because otherwise we get this wrong idea. You just only. Yeah. Well, it's changed. And, and I can tell you that this council is more receptive than we were.
I just said, anyways, I taught, uh, English for 12 years.
Oh, that was my favorite subject. And then people said, what's wrong with you? You don't speak Spanish? And I go, well, I was born here and I'm Native American. And now they're so stupidly, I took Spanish. Anybody who already knew, they just spoke Spanish. I couldn't win. All right, thank you.
All right, we would like to continue on with the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to have a quick break. Uh, we are going to move on to item number 12, introduction of new business. Item 12.1, create a pilot below-market rate preservation program and adopt a resolution amending fiscal year 2024-2025 budget to appropriate program budget adjustments. Staff.
Good evening, everyone. I, good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, city staff, and of course residents. My name's Kristi Thomas. I'm the Housing and Community Services Manager. And like the mayor said, I'm here tonight to present a pilot below-market rate preservation program. So the city's BMR portfolio consists of about 300 low-income family, senior, deed-restricted ownership units, many of which have down payment assistance loans that are deferred or forgiven after 30 years. All homes have a recorded resale restriction agreement and resale values based on specific CPI index. The city acquired most of the portfolio when South County Housing, an affordable housing developer, and Neighborhood Housing Services Silicon Valley, an affordable housing nonprofit, went out of business. Most of the homes in the portfolio were constructed between 1998 and 2013. All of them have a 30-year, 40-year deed restriction. Many will begin to age out of the program in about three years. This means they can be rented or sold without sharing appreciation with the city. Most restriction agreements allow households to sell their homes after 10 years at fair market value. The household's equity share calculation is based on their purchase price minus any down payment assistance and their change in the CPI index. The city remains, receives the remainder of the equity share less sales costs. The portfolio has been administered since 2017 by an affordable housing nonprofit called House Keys. To provide some additional context, I would like to share some accomplishments from the program over the past year. Over the past year, I've worked with House Keys to organize and move the program forward. I've constructed or conducted weekly check-ins and progress meetings, received and discussed quarterly reports, helped guide the creation of a portfolio list of all BMR homes, including their down payment assistance loans and their deed restriction expiration dates. I've worked to close open historical portfolio cases at least, or move, at least move some of them forward. We've conducted two homeownership outreach meetings, one virtual homeownership meeting for all BMR homeowners and one in-person meeting for homeowners from three developments. We then conducted their annual recertification process. Next week, we will meet with another homeownership development to begin their annual certification process. This process will continue until we've met all 12 ownership developments. Last January, we conducted the first annual certification process of 100% rental affordable housing developments, ones that have loans or regulatory agreements with the city. In addition, I worked to process annual HCD Begin and Cal Home reuse reports for the 22, 23, and 23, 24 fiscal years, as well as reconciling and organizing the Cal Home loan portfolio. Overall, I've organized the program's workflow process. So why a BMR, a pilot BMR preservation program? So between 2010 and 2020, Gilroy's population grew by 16.1%, while housing unit addition only grew by 12.3%. With a continued national, state, and local housing affordability shortage, the state has begun to push cities more than ever to accomplish housing element goals. In 2022, the state formed the Housing Accountability Unit, which holds jurisdictions accountable for meeting their housing element commitments and complying with state laws. The state views the enforcement of these laws as a way to meaningfully and positively impact the provisions of all housing in all communities. Since 2017, the BMR program here has lost 13 units due to selling at fair market value without a deed restriction. This has led to the loss of housing ownership for low-income families and seniors. Without an inclusionary housing ordinance, the city's only way to preserve affordable housing ownership for low-income households is by reselling units within the portfolio. The proposed pilot preservation program will help the city accomplish housing element goals, comply with state laws, preserve affordable housing, and strengthen regional partnerships. As I mentioned earlier, many of the homes in the portfolio were constructed decades ago. They carry restrictions allowing the owners to resell them at fair market value within a specific time period and with an equity share going to both the household and the city. The homeowner's resale equity share is based on the price they paid for their home, less any down payment assistance, and then the change in CPI index that their restriction agreement calls out. The amount owed to the homeowner is more than a low-income household can afford or qualify for. The city has the first right to purchase the home, but it must make that purchase or resell the home directly to an income-qualified household within 90 days of receiving notice from the household. Because the city's BMR program does not actively offer BMR homes for sale or resale, there's not an active pipeline of income-qualified households waiting to purchase these homes. This coupled with the fact that the city does not have funds available within a short timeframe to purchase the homes when they come up for resale, has caused the homes to be sold outside of the program to non-income-qualified households without deed restrictions, effectively losing low-income housing and losing them from the program. Learning about this scenario, I began talks with the Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing and the housing, and, and, sorry, the Santa Clara County Housing Authority, to see if there was interest in partnering with the city, with hopes that they would purchase these resale homes when available and then the city would have some time to find low-income house, a low-income household to buy the house and to allow it to remain in the program for an additional 30 years. While the county could not purchase the homes, they offered to create a program allowing the city to borrow their funding via a short-term 0% interest bridge loan. The county was already working on a new program called the BMR Partnership Program and with this request, added the jurisdictional acquisition loan component to it. The county program also provides up to $250,000 in deferred down payment assistance to low-income Santa Clara County residents. The county's jurisdictional acquisition loan component of the program allows jurisdictions to enter into a bridge loan agreement for the home's purchase price plus acquisition closing cost. The loan is for 12 months at 0% interest. If the jurisdictions cannot sell the home to a low-income household within 12 months, they can ask the county for an extension and sell the house to a non-income-qualified household and the bridge loan will be paid back. The city's pilot below-market rate preservation program will allow the city to use the county's bridge loan to purchase the resale, purchase a resale BMR home at the price due to the household, access the Housing Trust Fund to complete any necessary minor repairs on the house, pay for holding costs like utilities, HOA dues, and city administrator fee. The city will resell the house using county and city Begin or Cal Home down payment assistance with a 30-year deed restriction and ensure it goes to another low-income household. City Begin and Cal Home down payment assistance spending came from a grant from the state and can only be used for down payment assistance or homebuyer education. With city staff oversight, the entire process, including due diligence to decide if the house is a good fit for the program through appraisal and inspections, the acquisition, making necessary repairs to the home, and reselling to a qualified low-income household will be handled by the city's BMR administrator. Upon resale, the county loan and Housing Trust Fund will be repaid. There is currently an opportunity to purchase a BMR in a senior development. The fair market value for homes in this development is between $600,000 and $700,000, allowing the city to purchase and resell these homes to low-income seniors and keep them affordable by providing down payment assistance. The home available for resale is 21 years old and appraised at $670,000. It will need interior paint, carpeting, and a new roof. Based on the original purchase price and the CPI calculated equity, the household is entitled to $515,000, $354,000 for the home. The home will be sold at fair market value to cover the cost of repaying the county loan, repaying the Housing Trust Fund for repair, holding costs, BMR administrator fees, and closing costs. The city will receive an equity share of approximately $48,000. To make the home affordable to a low-income household, the county and city will provide deferred down payment assistance loans and the household will obtain a mortgage for $309,000. Let's look at an example of an estimated financial transaction. So the BMR will be sold at fair market, fair, fair market value to cover resale transaction costs and acquisition. Fair market value based on the appraisal in this instance is $670,000. The total acquisition costs are $546,122,000, which includes the purchase price, closing costs, and the BMR administrator acquisition fee. Program, program expenses total $75,100, which include unit repair and utility costs, HOA dues for up to 12 months, and the BMR resale fee. Uh, city equity share totals $48,778 after reselling and paying for the acquisition, transaction, and program expenses. To keep the home affordable to a low-income household, the county will provide $250,000 in deferred down payment assistance and the city will provide 111 in deferred down payment assistance. This assistance will be paid back after 30 years. The low-income household will need a first mortgage from an outside lender in the amount of $309,000. This city, or, sorry, the city has the option to forego its equity share, which would lower the price, sale price of the house and the down payment assistance needed. Fiscal impact. Uh, for the program overall, the net fiscal impact to city funds is anticipated to be minimal since sales proceeds would cover the bridge loan and various related resale costs and down payment assistance would be repaid. Besides staff time at the creation of the pilot program, internal city staff time is anticipated to be limited to general oversight and minimal administrative responsibilities during acquisition and resale transactions, as the city's BMR administrator would purchase, would process the transactions from start to finish. For the current BMR resale in a senior housing development, staff requests a budget amendment of $101,000 to the Housing Trust Fund. This is the estimated total of various related resale costs, which includes the unit holding costs, minor repairs, and transaction-related costs. It is the estimated cost besides the bridge loan. The Housing Trust Fund is utilized to cover this cost at first, then subsequently repaid from sales proceeds. The exact fiscal, fiscal impact will be determined with the resale transaction, but the net fiscal impact is anticipated to be minimal as explained above. Staff does not anticipate another BMR resale during this fiscal year. For the next fiscal year, staff will incorporate the pilot BMR preservation program in the budget development. Staff recommends that city council receive the report, direct staff to create a pilot below-market rate preservation program, become a partner agency in the Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing's BMR Partnership Program, and authorize staff to execute the necessary steps to preserve the affordability of BR homes, BMR homes as outlined in the report, including entering into loan agreements with, and repaying Santa Clara County and executing necessary documents as appropriate. Staff also requests that council adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 24-25 budget to appropriate pilot BMR preservation program budget adjustments. Thank you for your time and let me know if you have any questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Fregatz.
It's a great presentation, lot there.
It's a lot to say.
So I commend you for trying to put that into ways that maybe most people can understand. It seems like you're advocating for the City of Gilroy to kind of get into the home flipping business, more or less. I mean, you're finding a way to take an existing property, hold it, redo it, flip it to a new person so you can maintain the same kind of low-income status on the deed. Is that?
Right. So we are just trying to preserve the affordability because, like I said, they are starting to age out of the program. So this is kind of a standard thing that other cities do. They do go in, they have acquisition funds, and they purchase homes, and they do do minor rehabs on them and then resell them. And it's all because if the, if the agreement didn't say that we only had 90 days to do this, then we probably wouldn't be asking for that. We would have some more time to find a buyer and then be able to buy it straight from the current homeowner. But in this case, we just don't have the quick funding that we need within a short time period.
By keeping these properties off-market though, it also reduces inventory for the rest of the market and hence makes the rest of the market a little more expensive because there's less inventory?
Well, actually, right now in this development, this is at Village Green. There are two other homes that are for sale right now. One's going for $279 and one's going for $259. So they're very sought after there. So I don't really feel like, in that case, in this development, and this is one thing, this is one development that market rate is where we could actually keep it affordable with down payment assistance. A lot of the other developments in Morgan Hill, the BMR homes are more valued around $1 million. So down payment assistance really.
But if there are three homes and you took one off the market. But if there were three homes, and you took one off the market for the other two, stands to reason the other two would go for more money because there's less homes on the market, and that's just the way, kind of, the real estate market. But anyway, maybe this will help educate me. So, we've got 300 homes, you said?
About 300 homes.
What's the mean value on the, on the portfolio?
Um, I don't...
And maybe the median as well?
Yeah, I don't know the mean value, but the majority of the other 11 developments probably would sell closer to $1 million.
Okay. And is this part of one of the required things that's on our housing element that we submitted? It's actually a required thing?
Yeah, so, it is actually, I could read to you the, there's, let's see, six different housing element goals. Monitoring of units at risk of converting to market rate, resale control on owner-occupied below-market-rate units, identification and preservation of at-risk units, funding sources to assist homeownership, pursue funding for affordable housing, and housing for ELI and special-needs households, seniors.
So, there's multiple ways to do this, though, right? I mean, this isn't the only way to do it?
Um, so, the other way that the city could do this is the city could, you know, forego its equity share, or it could take, so, the majority of the money from the Los Arroyos Fund and the Housing Trust Fund have all been from repayment of loans, but also not just loans, equity shares. You know, as I said, the, the portfolio came from South County Housing, and so the city was not someone that originally gave out money to these folks for them to pay back. It came with the portfolio, or it came via equity share. So, really, all the money that is coming in from these developments is supposed to be for affordable housing and preserving it.
So, each one of these that we decide to flip, about how many staff hours would you estimate it takes to do the whole process?
Yeah, so, I would say this first one is taking more staff time, obviously, because of coming up designing the program and the policy. But really, after that, I would say, you know, no more than probably, I mean, probably 10 hours or so of working with house keys. For the most part, in Morgan Hill, when we had our acquisition fund, all that would happen is house keys would, you know, let us know the appraisal, the condition of the home, and then they would just take it that way. We would help with the lottery, which honestly takes 10 minutes. And then, you know, obviously, city administrator and the city attorney have to sign documents and all that, so that would probably take them about an hour of their time.
And we're going to potentially hold this property sometimes for a certain period of time?
Yeah, yeah.
If there's a housing slump at all that happens during that time, and we're carrying the property?
Well, worst case, worst case is we can sell it at market rate to a non, to someone that's not income-qualified.
But possibly at below our acquisition cost?
Yeah, probably not, though, because our acquisition cost is pretty, pretty low compared to the value of this home. Right now, it was just appraised at $670,000, and our acquisition cost is, I think, $515,000.
We saw stuff in 2011, 2012, at least.
Yeah, we did, for sure.
That definitely did that.
And worst case, the city has an asset on its books, it could rent it out. There are other, other ways to deal with having an, a, an asset on your books. But I don't foresee that happening, and that's the other thing, is we would do due diligence, say with house keys, go get an appraisal, look at the condition of the home. Obviously, if the market's dropping, then we would just opt to not do that.
And if somebody bails and causes $120,000 of the damage on the home, or something like that, then we're still...
What do you mean?
We're still, I mean, so, we know going into it that this one only has $23,000 or whatever repairs.
Yeah.
And we get all of that in 10 hours? We get that understanding of, and be able to handle that?
So, so, when, when the, so, currently, there's actually another person that's going to be selling a Village Green home that's been talking to house keys now. So, they're already going through the process right now of letting house keys know that they want to sell it, and working with them to get an appraisal and an inspection of the home, not even with the, you know, inkling that maybe the city would buy it. They haven't even, you know, requested that from the city yet. It will get to that process. But all of that stuff happens before the city even starts working on it, because these folks do have, you know, the right to sell this home. So, it just starts the process, and then the city gets the opportunity, gets the first right of refusal, basically. We, we tell them, yes, we're interested in purchasing the home, or no, we're not, go ahead and sell it. And they would still only receive a certain amount of money, and then the city would get their equity share.
And if a person owns one of these homes and has it for, like you said, 10 years or whatever it is, the amount of money that they get is just the CPI adjustment?
Mm-hmm. And so, it's their, it's whatever their down, their purchase price was, and then if they had down payment assistance, then obviously that is taken off, and then the, the adjustment between their original CPI and their ending CPI, no matter what the house sells for, as far as market rate goes.
But if I understood Terrence correctly, he was asking, is it the city of Gilroy responsible for the repairs on the house that they purchased?
So, if they were just to sell it on the market rate, then no, the city wouldn't be involved in that portion of it.
But suppose they want to keep it in low-income housing, below-market rate?
Yes, but then the city...
Before a family could get in there, the, the city of Gilroy would have to pay...
Yeah, the city of Gilroy is...
He was asking how many hours would that take of someone's job overseeing all the repairs?
So, that would be house keys. House keys would over, yeah, they would oversee all of that.
Yeah, you said, you said below-market rate Administrator, and it sounded like the city, it was the city employee.
Oh, so, no, it's an outside consultant, house keys, yeah.
And then, you, you talked about a minimal, minimal amount of money that the city puts in. I mean, a minimal could be 3 million. I, you know, what's...
Yeah, I mean, you guys could give us a budget, but, you know, for this house, there, we are thinking $17,000, I think, for carpet and paint, and then between $10,000 and $17,000 for the roof. They're smaller homes, so they cost less. But that's an estimate. We haven't actually got an estimate on the roof yet. We haven't gone that far, because we need to see if this is something you guys are even interested in. But you could put a cap on it, a certain percentage or something.
Can I, so, thank you. And Greg and I spent quite a bit of time, but maybe this might help. You, you told us when we met, how many houses a year do you anticipate?
Yeah, so, maybe, I think at the most, two or three houses a year, because the county only has about $840,000 currently to actually put towards for this. So, if they give us this loan of $520,000, you know, they're only going to have, for a short while, $270,000 or whatever left. So, they're not going to be able to really fund anything until we pay them back this loan, and then they can do it again.
So, we're not going to be buying 10 homes?
We're not going to be buying 10 homes.
20 homes?
We're just going to try to, you know, save as many as we can within reason, and obviously, only if they are in the city's best interest and in another family's best interest.
And then also, aside from the fact that this directly adheres to the requirements of the housing element, you explained it in a way this morning, perhaps you can help us, where it's really more the original investment, and then it kind of comes back when, when the next house sells, you get that...
Oh, the delta, yeah.
The delta, and then that's what's then invested in the next house that you buy, type of thing.
So, because of the city equity share, you know, originally, the city didn't even put money into these homes. Yet, they are getting an equity share, and also, when the folks have been there past 10 years, before 10 years, there's not much of an equity share at all. The city doesn't get hardly any money, and obviously, the CPI hasn't gone up much for that low-income homeowner. So, only after they've been there for 10 years can it be sold at market rate, and that is when you can, you know, increase your equity share on both, both sides.
How many of these are in the senior communities, percentage-wise, versus the rest of the community?
A smaller number.
Okay.
And this, this community, the majority of the units are starting to age out in three years. So, we have a really small window to actually be able to try to save some of these homes for seniors.
It sounds, sounds to me, sorry, other comments?
Go ahead.
I mean, we can keep going, but it sounds to me that really you can only do one at a time.
Yeah, there's definitely only one at a time.
Right.
So, and, you know, I think it'll be good to try the first one and see how it goes, and, you know, lessons learned if there are any, and, and if you guys would like us to do that, we could come back and report on how it went with the first one. It's, it's up to you guys how you want to run the program.
Well, I was making that comment. I wanted, I wasn't sure at first, but I just want to be sure. I don't believe that we should get in the housing business and, and start maintaining a bunch of inventory. I think that would be a mistake.
Yeah.
But one at a time on homes that appear to have plenty of equity, that all of the costs get repaid.
Repaid, yeah.
Almost all the costs get repaid, and in some cases, additional monies that'll end it back in the Housing Trust Fund. Correct?
Right, right.
It's also not universally accepted that this is a good policy for low-income homebuyers either, in terms of the way that these loans are structured, the way that you can't create generational wealth. There's many other reasons why these are, are traps in a way for a lot of people who can't pass on the wealth that their being in these homes has brought, and it goes back into the program to administrative fees and other things that exist. So, it's, it, it, it's not exactly a slam dunk great for low-income.
Right, but it, it does, it does allow these folks to get, obviously, these people are getting some equity, for sure, especially the folks that have been in these homes for about 21 years. So, this next one, if they need a lot of down payment assistance, then they won't have as much equity, but they are guaranteed to have a house payment that is the same, is not going up, possibly even going down, compared to when we put them in 100% affordable rentals. Their rent does go up based on AMI every year. So, there's that. So, there are different, you know, there's security there, that your landlord is not going to ask you to move out, all that sort of thing.
There's risk, too.
There's definitely risk.
I mean, I bought my house for less than the people before me, so...
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, CPI can go down, there is that.
All right, any further questions? We'll do public comment. We have any public comment, please?
Yes, we have two speakers. First, Ron.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. We have one further question by Councilmember Ramirez, sorry.
What are the repercussions if we do not do this in terms of compliance with our housing element?
Um, well, that could be like a whole nother meeting.
So, that's almost an answer in itself.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we do have seven years, but honestly, we don't, because there are, we have, you know, committed to certain years, yeah. So, this will help a lot.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. My questions are pretty much similar to Councilmember Fugazi's questions. So, we're not using realtors at all, and we're, appears we're not going to be using lending institutions like banks. This is all going to be in-house. And that kind of is a concern to me, too. And it does bother me that this is, again, we're not using banks, we're not using loans, we're using the taxpayers' money, I think. Is this a wise, and if we are, is this a wise use of taxpayers' money? Thank you.
And the next speaker is Ann Marie McCollough.
So, I know homeless senior citizens, and if there's a way to do this in an exchange one time, I know one person, it, it would matter. So, I don't think it's the best real estate deal, but Kristi knows what she's talking about clearly, and if we gave it a shot one time, it may save someone from being out on the streets. And it's that close. I mean, it's, people are riding that close to homelessness. I cannot stress that enough. So, maybe this isn't the solution to our homeless problem, but it's a step in the right direction, and it would be a reflection of our counsel that you're acknowledging that. So, that's it, thanks.
That completes our speakers. Okay, open back up. Any further questions, Councilmember Bracco?
Yeah, I'm willing to use this as a pilot project and see what happens with it, but in the future, I would like some estimated costs, not minimal, because minimal to me and somebody else is totally different. So, I would like to see some numbers put in there. Thank you.
Okay. I did get some numbers from house keys on other recent ones that they've helped with, so...
Additional comments, questions?
I move to, move forward with this on, on pilot.
Okay, so, we, I am going to be entertaining possibly two motions. So, what I'm hearing, I think, from Councilmember Ramirez is that she's making a motion to receive report, direct staff to create a pilot below-market-rate Preservation Program, become a partner agency in the Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing BMR Partnership Program, and authorize staff to execute the necessary steps to preserve the affordability of BMR homes as outlined in the report, including entering into loan agreements with and repaying Santa Clara County and executing necessary documents as appropriate. So, I have a motion. Looking for a second.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Bracco. Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
No.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Potto.
Yes. Motion passes five to one. So, now, based on that, we need to, I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget to appropriate pilot BMR Preservation Program budget adjustments.
One more.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bracco.
One second.
And a second by Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Wait, 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 wait. Can we have a question here beforehand?
Sure.
Is it the hundred-and-some-thousand that we saw earlier in the report, or how, yes, that is the amount that we're amending? Okay, all right.
Sorry about that, thank you.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
No.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Potto.
Yes. Motion passes five to one. Okay, thank you. Moving on, item 12.2, Presentation on Elected Official's Role in Emergency Management. Staff report will be by Andrew Young, Emergency Services Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, community members. My name is Andrew Young, Emergency Services and Volunteer Coordinator for the city of Gilroy, and tonight we'll be discussing elected official's role in emergency management. There are several natural hazards that are identified in the local hazard mitigation plan, but the following are most likely to occur in the city of Gilroy, and these are ranked in the local hazard mitigation plan as the highest, wildfires, flooding, earthquake, and inclement weather. Inclement weather can be atmospheric rivers, severe winds, extreme temperatures. Elected officials play a critical role in emergency management by ensuring that the city is prepared for disasters, responding effectively during crises, and leading recovery efforts afterwards. Their decisions can shape community resilience and influence long-term mitigation strategies. Now, we're looking at before a disaster, it's important to understand the local hazards, familiarize yourself with the local hazard mitigation plan, to understand the hazards, the levels of community preparedness, and strategies to reduce the risk of damage and loss of life. And it's also important to learn about past disasters and their impacts and lessons learned. Learn from others. What worked, what didn't work? What can we apply here? Just because something didn't work somewhere else doesn't mean it doesn't work here. We just need to evaluate that element. Know your roles and responsibilities when disasters occur. Review the emergency operations plan and the elected official guidance. Also, all of you should have been issued an emergency action card. If you have not, do follow-up with Jimmy afterwards, and this has a brief overview of actions for you to follow when a disaster occurs. Prioritize preparedness. Advocate for support of staff and funding allocations towards emergency planning and infrastructure improvements to enhance community resilience. Participate in and observe emergency preparedness drills and training when opportunities arise. Promote perimeter initiatives, whether it be encouraging volunteers in emergency management, such as our Community Emergency Response Team, or our amateur radio emergency services operators. Promote know-your-neighbor programs and build on that social capacity. Promote education and awareness in the community. Learn about emergency management and assistance programs. Stay informed about federal and state disaster assistance programs, and also legal frameworks, such as the California Emergency Services Act, the California Disaster Assistance Act, and the Stafford Act that help communities respond and recover. Encourage collaboration and coordination. Strengthen relationships with community stakeholders, including but not limited to community-based and faith-based organizations. including but not limited to community-based and faith-based organizations, private sector nonprofit schools, and also neighboring governmental jurisdictions. Obtain emergency management training, participate in self-paced online training and also in-person training available through FEMA, Related Emergency Management and Leadership. Lastly, familiarize yourself with legal authorities and responsibilities. Learn about the powers granted during emergencies, such as issuing emergency orders. During a disaster, it's important to maintain situational awareness at all times and stay informed. Really need to monitor for real-time updates, and that could be via email, text, phone conversation, phone conference, or in-person when you meet with city administrator. Work closely with the city administrator and emergency management staff. Support policy decisions while allowing the staff to strategically plan for and handle tactical operations during a disaster. Serve as a conduit between constituents and the Emergency Operations Center. Address concerns from residents and businesses by relaying that information to emergency management teams or their emergency operations center. Help distribute accurate official updates to reduce misinformation and relay any misinformation to the EOC so the Emergency Public Information Officer can mitigate through rumor, rumor control. Act as a liaison with officials at all levels of government, advocate for state and federal assistance, and collaborate with county and state officials as requested to support response and recovery. Visit impacted areas. And here, we really want to think about accountability and safety, so it's important that you just don't go out to a scene and that you coordinate that with the EOC Director. And also, when assessing, assessing these areas, it's important that we avoid interference with response efforts. Support local assistance centers and disaster recovery centers. It's important that we engage our community members and we let them know that we are there and we're listening and we hear them and provide additional support as needed. Assist constituents with communication and problem solving and resource allocation. Relay urgent concerns related to incident response and recovery to the city administrator so they can be addressed and prioritized by the Emergency Operations Center. And work with businesses and nonprofits to provide additional support to our community Following a disaster, understand disaster assistance programs and advocate for resources. Guide constituents on where to find assistance to apply for federal, state aid, loans, and grants. Provide ongoing community support. Recovery takes years and we'll need to address long-term infrastructure, housing, and economic recovery needs, and we'll need to maintain public engagement throughout the entire process because we don't want to build back to the way it was, we want to build to a new normal so we're more resilient in the face of disasters. Serve as a bridge between constituents and government recovery efforts. Ensure transparency and timely flow of information. Communicate recovery timelines and challenges effectively. It's important to, to understand that recovery is a long and complex process. It can take years. After the North Ridge earthquake, for example, they just closed out that incident within the last five years. So it can take many years depending on the size and complexity of the incident. Identify future mitigation opportunities. Invest in resilient infrastructure to prevent or reduce disasters' impacts. Strengthen building codes and land use policies to reduce vulnerabilities. Implement special initiatives to support economic recovery. Encourage programs and support modifications to policies that support an expedited recovery with fewer barriers. Leverage state and federal funding to rebuild critical infrastructure. Engage in the long-term recovery process. Ask questions, again, it is a very complex process. Continue collaboration with emergency management to improve future preparedness based on lessons learned. I lost my screen. Preparedness as a priority. Ensuring that constituents are informed about hazards, prepared to take protective actions, and capable of sustaining themselves for at least 72 hours will help reduce strain on governmental services and enhance community resilience. These days, while it's recommended that 72 hours is the going self-sustaining timeline, it could be as long as one week to even two weeks. And what everyone in our community does now to better prepare themselves for the next disaster will allow us be, to be better equipped to maintain government continuity, sustain operations, expedite essential service delivery, and facilitate recovery efforts. In managing emergencies, you serve as policy group advisors during emergency operations center activations, and you help guide decisions on emergency policies, financial authorizations, and resource distribution. You coordinate with the EOC Director to support multi-agency coordination, establish strategic priorities for recovery efforts, and ensure legal and ethical compliance and decision-making. Need to address cultural and economic and political considerations, ensure equitable access to emergency resources to everyone within our community. Going to ratify emergency declarations, policies, and other documents, and ensure legal requirements are met for declaring emergencies and unlocking that potential With a local emergency declaration, if local resources are insufficient, a local emergency must be proclaimed. And this enables the city to do a few things: access additional funding and assistance, authorize emergency actions including evacuation orders, curfews, and also implement emergency ordinances to protect public health and safety. And in order to describe the Emergency Operations Center, we'll talk about the functions of the EOC. The EOC coordinates response efforts across the organization and assists with multi-agency response. They manage planning and logistics for disaster response and support field operations and executive decision-making. Some of the things that we follow, frameworks that we follow in emergency management and as disaster service workers are the standardized emergency management system and the national incident management system. And elected officials would certainly benefit from familiarizing themselves with these frameworks and, and how it relates to incident command structures and inter-agency coordination, and how it's important to understand how they operate to ensure effective leadership during emergencies. As we transition into emergency public information, it's incredibly important that we provide timely, accurate, and coordinated communication to reduce any confusion or miscommunication, not only internally but externally and in partnership with other agencies throughout the county. The city administrator will provide regular updates to city council. And you keep council members informed of changing conditions and the response efforts. All media requests and public statements should be directed through the Emergency Public Information Officer, and they will manage those media relations requests. And the mayor, as the primary spokesperson, will deliver key messages in coordination with the Emergency Public Information Officer. So I'd like to go back and reinforce roles and responsibilities. So when talking about response actions, we want to stay calm. Ensure personal and familial safety before engaging in official duties. And again, take some time to review that card quickly before you take action, the emergency management action card. Check in with the city administrator for updates. Monitor communication channels for situational awareness. Now, we have 1610 AM radio, there's the government city of Gilroy webpage, and the official social medias. You also have text, you have email, phone conversations. Now, each of you should also have a Get Government Emergency Telecommunications Service Card with Wireless Priority Service access. If you have a city-assigned cell phone to access Wireless Priority Service, since you've been registered, all you have to do is dial *272 and the phone number that you intend to reach each time. For the Government Emergency Telecommunications Service System, there is a PIN number on that card so you can access the phone systems times where there's a lot of congestion. These cards, if you do not have them, or if you need emailed, let Jimmy know and I will ensure that you are resent your PIN numbers. Emergency management, and when you're reporting to your designated locations, city council chambers is a designated location. If this was uninhabitable for whatever reason, then we would go to an alternate location that would be decided at the time. Also, you will ratify local emergency proclamations to activate resources, support policy decisions to expedite response efforts, and if necessary, the city administrator will recommend a emergency meeting in city council if conditions warrant. The city administrator may declare a disaster within 10 days of the disaster, and the city council must ratify and review continuation every 21 days and proclaim a termination when conditions improve. Any thoughts, any questions?
We have those cards?
I'm supposed to give them to you? I was giving them today, I will go back and get them for you after the meeting.
No, it's okay, thank you. Any, any questions? Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you very much. Any public comment?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay. No, no action on that tonight. Okay, so moving on, number 13, future council-initiated agenda items, we have none, and number 14, city administrators' report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report on 14.1 as I gave you a report last Monday, but I will have some updates on the 17th of March for you. We have two very quick demonstrations that you've been waiting to see that Bryce is going to do for you, and one is the CCLIP Fix app, and then the other is our new GIS map and bicycle and pedestrian encouragement program. So Bryce is going to give you an example of those, they haven't gone live yet, but we wanted to kind of show you what we have so far. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor and Council, so really quickly, CCLIP Fix is an online portal for entering customer service requests. We're naming it Gilroy Connect. It's primarily focused on public works, like water leaks, streetlights, not working down trees, those type of requests, and public place reporting, graffiti reporting, abandoned, you know, shopping carts. But we're expanding that to include other departments and service requests, and so be able to field questions to each department as well as other items like abandoned vehicles and other, other needs for different departments. It's intended to enhance customer service by increasing responsiveness, accountability, and transparency, and we'll talk about how, how it does that. So how it works, it's an online portal and mobile app for both Apple and Android devices, and you begin by selecting the location of the items to be reported. So if you're operating off of a cell phone, it'll tag your location where you are, and if on computer, you can select through a map. Once entered, the system will then submit an acknowledgement email to that requister, and all employees in the workflow of the system are then notified of that request coming through. Additional correspondence is made through the system and everything is tracked, and most requests are public, which means that others can see the requests that are being submitted, and allows for two things. One, residents knowing that the issue's already under, you know, already been reported and where it is and the status of being resolved, and things to also prevent multiple reports coming in and that redundancy of, of effort trying to resolve it. Let me, let me switch real quick here, sorry. So this is the, you know, this is not quite the view of, sorry, so this is not quite the view that the public will see, this is the kind of ministry review, but the map is essentially what you'd see going into the system and identifying reports that are coming in. In this case, we have some test desk reports that have been populated, but allows anybody from the public to come in, open, and see the status of all the requests. So where it is in this case, is an acknowledged phase, when the item is anticipated to be resolved. SLA is the, is the status for escalation, so the system has allowed certain timeframes that we get to set by service request where it gets escalated to the next level, to make sure in case an employee is not responding in the appropriate timeframe that we set, their supervisor manager is then notified and they can step in and make sure that request is resolved. Additionally, it allows comments, so here's all comments, but the public will only see, the public only comments, and they'll be able to track and see the correspondence between the original requister and the city staff as they respond. Internally, it's everything, including posting pictures of, of the incident or the issue, so in this case, broken sprinkler, and being able to see when that case is transferred maybe to another employee in the system. So it allows a lot more accountability as we go through to make sure that we're staying on top of things. And it also puts out in the public how long it takes to get responses to these service requests. The simple approach, it's a pretty straightforward form, they would simply identify on the map or on their phone in their specific location, a location where they want to make a report, identify from the category, it's a traffic signal issue, enter in this short description, add a photo if they have it, and they're, they enter their own information and log request, and it's logged. And so it's a really easy, really simple tool to use, it's used by a lot of cities, Oakland, Burlingame, Elk Grove, a lot of others throughout the state and throughout the nation. So it's a really powerful system, allows to, to accomplish a lot through that. And then I also pulled up an example, so just to see where the public sees, this is Elk Grove's, so it's a system that's been used for a while, tracks along their city by each selection, so this is a purely public view, can identify full description of the request, and see a full correspondence exchange between the city staff and the requister, and know the status and where things stand. So that is a real quick, quick tour of demo. Let me switch back over real quick.
Is this an app?
Yes, so it's a web app, so it's accessible, it's independently hosted by CCLIP Fix, which is now a Civic Plus company.
Hey Bryce?
Yes, sir.
Are there backend dashboards that city council or their staff are able to monitor for ongoing kind of understanding of hitting SLAs or, or other metrics?
Yeah, so there's no, there's no canned reports that we have. What we do have is there is, there is a backend platform identifies all cases, and so there's filters that managers, executives can use to identify based on type where they're closed, pending, anything that's beyond or had to be escalated. We can pull data from that, but there's not like a set reporter or dashboard that we have.
So I can't know, for instance, like potholes used to take 13 days, now they're 10 days, and, and just kind of get a, a, a pulse or a heartbeat of, like what's going on and how things are going better or worse for, for services in the city, for us as elected?
We can, we can extrapolate that information from, from the data, but it doesn't present it in a way where it's an easy report to produce, if that makes sense. way where it's an easy report to produce, if that makes sense. We're hoping that the Civic Plus recently purchased the software and has already started doing improvements on the process. So we're providing a list, as most other customers are providing a list of improvements that we're wanting to see in the system. So we're hoping that more opportunities to expand that feature will be added in the future. Talked about escalation, talked about the managers having their review of each case. I mentioned no specific performance measure reports, but some data can be pulled. User training for the city staff is beginning towards the end of this week, and we're going into the final weeks of testing. The website portal is anticipated to go live. It will go first before the app. It'll go live March 31st. The mobile app is in development, is nearing completion, and we anticipate it will go live by April 11th, if not sooner. And then work will continue on integrating with CityWorks, which is the software that is used by our public works department, where it'll streamline and remove any middle, any staff in between. They're having to interpret information from C Click Fix to CityWorks. It'll happen automatically through the system integration. That completes the presentation on C Click Fix.
Will you let us know when it does actually, when?
Kelly, can you use your mic, please?
So you'll let us know when the app actually is live?
Correct, yes. And then there'll be social media that would go out as kind of teasing and letting customers know as it approaches and giving some awareness. Okay.
Thank you.
The next one is Bike GIS update. So we're calling this one Gilroy Pathways. This was the council-approved use of Measure B bicycle pedestrian funding, develop a GIS map webpage intended to help identify pedestrian bicycle network paths, mark key points of interest to help encourage people to take active transportation, and identify those networks, those features like bike racks and water fountains that help and plan out trips using our systems. And so I'm just going to pull up the map here. It's going a little slow tonight. And so customers will receive a landing on the, sorry, they'll arrive on this landing page, give them basic instructions to get through, identify a map of how to use the system. We're going to skip through that. So this is the network of both pedestrian and bicycle paths. Let me see if I can disable some views here. So the green is the pedestrian, the gray, darker green-gray is our bike lanes. We have, this is all from the 2040 general plan of our network systems. Each one, this is the largest cost item, is the detailed GPS mapping in person of each site or each segment to grant the totality of the view. When you engage the points of interest in the system, that's where you have different amenities that are listed and identified. So if you look down Monterey, they have quite a selection. You have anything from bike racks. When selecting them, identifies what it is, the type, gives an ID number, so if somebody identifies any damage, it can report, we can know exactly what item it is, and then features a picture of the item, so in this case, the bike rack here. We also have public art, as mentioned, water fountains, and so provides that information for people to decide what's going on and what's worthwhile to visit and what helps to encourage that trail. The site is going to be nestled into a city webpage that we have in the recreation department, and it'll have other side banners that identify different activities that are happening along bike racks or bike paths and pedestrian paths in order to help identify activities to encourage people to go out and use these trails and networks. So we are entering into a public comment period, is what we're asking for. So 30 days, April 4th. Information will be shared via social media and the email express, seeking public input and suggestions regarding the map, ways to improve it. Residents can access the map at the following online address, cityofgilroy.org/bikegis. Comments should be provided via email to rec@cityofgilroy.org with the subject line of Bike GIS. Staff will be finalizing the webpage, as we mentioned, with the additional information for education and encouragement. Because the map was created with bike and pedestrian education encouragement funds, the map page must be focused on that. So we welcome all suggestions, and some that may not be in that focus line we'll keep for potential future possibilities, but we're not necessarily be able to be added to this map currently. And that completes the update. Questions? Happy to rest them.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to item number 15, city attorneys' report.
I do have an update. I know you received a memo from Andy Faber about the Levine Act and the $250 campaign contribution limitations 12 months from a project. Well, as of January 1st, 2025, that has been raised to $500, and the cure provision, when you could return it, the check or the money, was 14 days. They've increased that to 30 days of accepting or soliciting that campaign contribution. We'll be coming out with a memo, but I just wanted to let you know that they have increased it.
Thank you very much. Could you please take us into closed session?
This is going to be a conference with real property negotiators, and the property's located at 145th Street, APN 799-070-23. The negotiators are Jimmy Forbes, city administrator, and Victoria Valencia, Economic Development Manager. And the other parties to the negotiation are Advantage Peak LLC. Under negotiations are price and terms of lease, so we don't have to take a vote to go in, but we will have to take a vote when we are in the closed session. So are there any public comments on this closed session?
We have no speakers.
No speakers. Okay, so then we're going to adjourn to a closed session.
Thank you very much.